Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for October nineteenth at six P M. Can I please have everybody stand for the pledge allegiance?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, first thing on the agenda is discussion on re- relocate relocating the polling place from West Warren Senior Center to the Shepherd Building. And this was brought to us by the town clerk, correct?
Yes, and unfortunately, there was a miscommunication between myself and Karen as to the fact that I needed it to be a vote and not a discussion. But it didn't get put on the agenda to vote, so therefore, I would request, could we table this until your next meeting?
We can table it.
I mean, I could go on and on and on, but without a vote, I'm just gonna have to do it again anyways, so. If it's all the same with you, I would rather just do it next time.
We can do that.
Because that is, you know, the only way it's gonna happen ultimately is with your approval, so. So I guess that was quick.
Well, thank you very much.
All right, sorry about that, but.
You guys good with the table on it?
Yep.
Till next meeting?
No problem.
All right.
All right.
We'll see you then. Probably see you sooner, but talk about it then. Bye, everyone.
Okay, next thing on the agenda, discussion on accepting the hours for Leona Rooball for the senior tax work off abatement, anticipated vote. Unfortunately, we have no paperwork for this.
We could table this till the twenty-sixth, Mr. Chair.
You guys good with the table on it?
Yep. I'm good.
So we'll table that to the next meeting. And just make sure we have the paperwork for it done. Okay, next thing on the agenda is review the articles for the special town meeting and anticipated vote.
Oh, these guys are tall.
So you guys wanna go through them one at a time, just like we do each year? If we're good with it, check it off and just move on?
I brought my reading glasses.
Very good. You getting your peepers?
Yep.
Okay, so Article One, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars to stabilization or to take any action relative thereto. You guys good with it?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Did you wanna explain anything about that?
Um, I will just.
Stabilization.
Yep, it's just going into savings account. Currently, uh, the town.
So we have thirty-something of these, so we're gonna go through them fairly quick.
Yep, currently, the town has one million, six hundred, forty-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars in stabilization. This will put us over the two million dollar mark, which will be the highest the towns ever have had in stabilization.
Okay. I'd say we're doing well, better than we ever had.
What was he passed?
Well, not two million dollars.
Yeah, whatever it was, it wasn't two million.
Barely anything.
That's a good answer.
Saving for a rainy day. All right, so Article Two, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of one hundred thousand to the capital stabilization or take any action there relative to. Mr. Farrar?
Uh, currently, the town has in capital stabilization, five hundred, eight thousand, three hundred, ninety-eight dollars. This will put us over the six hundred thousand dollar mark, um, if this was approved.
You guys good with that?
Yep, and this is for capital projects?
Yes.
Right? Okay, but we haven't allocated any of this?
No.
Okay, but it's just our big bucket of money right now. Okay.
Sounds good.
Good, yep.
Okay, Article Three, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of twenty-four thousand for the building maintenance and improvement as follows, seventy-five hundred to the Shepherd Building improvements lines, three thousand to Town Hall repair maintenance line, and seventy-five hundred to the Council of Aging Maintenance Line or to take any relative action thereto. Guys good with that?
Yeah.
Yep.
Article Four, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of two thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars for repairs to the roof at the Senior Center or take any action relative thereto. Guys good?
Quick question. We're not debating the number, right? We're just debating the.
If you have any questions about it or anything?
I'm, I'm just concerned if that's enough?
Yes.
Okay.
So, um, I had a, um, a roofer inspect. Uh, the roofer has indicated that there's about three to five years left on the roof, and he feels as though that if we were to spend a small amount of money, twenty-four hundred dollars, um, he will go up there, patch what needs to be patched. Some of the shingles are missing. There's algae growing on the roof, get rid of the algae, do some, um, do some other seam work up there, and that will take care of it.
Perfect. Thank you.
So why would we just not just get the roof done?
Well, we could, uh, but there's about.
Because if we're gonna patch it, just to get us through a couple more years.
How much is the whole thing?
Uh, anywhere around forty thousand dollars, somewhere around that ballpark. Um, there's still, you know, life left of that roof.
So we could get another five years maybe, or what's?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a small amount of money to take care of it now, um, to get you a few more years left out of the roof, five years.
What if we do nothing?
Well.
That's what I'm worried.
Well, we don't want it to leak, so.
You know, it, it, it's difficult because, you know, part of that roof, a good percentage of that roof, is, is somewhat newer because there was an addition put on.
Yeah.
Uh, some other parts of it is, is not as good. Uh, you know, there's, there's, um, shingles, you know, that have taken off and have blown off the roof, so. This, this was recommended by a very qualified roofing company, um, that has done several.
Get us through a few seasons, and we know we have to allocate money towards that.
Towards a capital plan, yeah.
Yeah, so that's gotta go in our capital plan then. Okay.
Okay.
Done.
I'm good. You good?
Yes, sir.
You good?
Yep.
Okay. All right, Article Five, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of three thousand to pay for staff training or to take any relative action thereto. Guys good with that?
Do we have an answer if they ask what kind of training?
Uh, this is for, um, it, it was, I know the training off my, top of my head.
Customer service.
Customer service training. We're looking at customer service training for all our employees, um, because there's a need for it, so.
As long as we have an answer for that.
Yeah.
Good. This may be able to buy you two trainings, you know, it may also be able to do a customer service training and a maybe a verbal judo or a de-escalation or a sexual harassment training. It may, you know, it may have, you know, the, the options of, of getting two trainings for the price of, you know, for, for this price, so.
Okay, very good. Are you guys good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a comment. Um, is this worded correctly, or to take any relative actions thereto, is it not to take?
Oh, action, yes, I'm sorry.
Action relative thereto.
Yes.
Those words are mixed up.
Yeah.
It looks like.
I will fix that.
I could not tell that.
It just, after going to so many town meetings, it just doesn't sound right.
Yes.
Right? It sounds funny.
Yeah.
And I think those, yeah, those are reversed.
Good catch, thank you.
So we'll make that grammatical correction on them all. Are you guys are good with the?
Yes, sir.
Three thousand, right?
Yes.
Article Six, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of four thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars to the vocational, educational transportation for an increase to transportation costs for an out-of-district student. This is something that's mandated, it's automatic, right?
Um.
Well, we have another student going, right?
Yes, so out of last year's budget, um, at the time, when we were doing last year's budget, the numbers for transportation were not yet released by Vanpool. Um, and now, since they have been released, Vanpool has went up, uh, almost five thousand dollars for transportation for out-of-district student. So we budgeted thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars, so add an additional almost five thousand dollars for, for an out-of-district.
Is this the ride to Northampton?
Yes.
Okay.
You guys are good with that, right?
I guess we have to be.
Yeah, it's automatic. We gotta pay it.
Yep.
No brainer.
Okay, Article Seven, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of twenty-five thousand for the maintenance to the town's levy to take any action relative thereto. So twenty-five thousand, we're looking at, doing some repairs, getting some.
Startup money.
Startup money for it, because it's gonna cost a lot more than that, so.
Well, and we can tell them next week that we're doing this, right?
Yep.
It'll be a.
Yeah.
A good thing to let them know.
Yeah, we gotta start an account for it, so we can start getting stuff taken care of over there. You guys good with twenty-five thousand?
Yeah, does it seem like a good starting number?
Good starting.
Yeah, it's okay.
We can at least get some inspections done, have somebody camera the pipes and stuff like that and see what condition they are, they're in, so.
Somebody to work those valves.
We can tell the Corps of Engineers, hey, we're working it.
Yeah.
Excuse me. Got a little bit of cold coming on.
Uh-oh.
No, it's not COVID. It's the plague that goes around the schools, and then also my wife gives it to me because she gets it from all the kids off the bus. All right, Article Eight, to see if the town will vote to transfer, transfer from free cash the sum of three thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty-six cents to the Shepherd Building Municipal Line for security hinges for interior doors at the Shepherd Building. One thousand, seven hundred and seventeen, fifty-six, and two thousand for the power washing for the building or take any action there relative thereto. You guys good with those?
So, power washing the building, that was a new one to me.
No, that was in the back of the building because there's a bunch of algae growing up on the, the walkway and up on the side of the building. And when it got a little damp out, it was like a slip and slide.
Yeah, okay.
Walking out there, and when we're back there looking at, inspecting the back of the building, um, we noticed that it was actually becoming dangerous for employees, so anybody going out that entrance. And then when we, we have the haunted house going on.
Yeah.
And we don't want anybody slipping or anything, you know, you might have some crazy guy chasing people with a chainsaw or something like that, you know? But, um.
Yeah, 'cause I was gonna say, two thousand to power wash this building seemed like a real bargain.
And also, there's some roof things, too.
Yeah, they got the, rid of the, um, the moss and everything growing in the roof drains.
Oh, yeah.
So that was causing a problem before it caused an ice dam.
Yeah.
Because winter's coming soon, and, you know, if you have all that, that moss built up around the drain, it's just not gonna drain and just build up on there and.
Yep.
Cause extra weight on the roof.
So the, this article will put the money back into the account, so.
That's already been done, so.
Security hinges have not been, you know, they're on order.
Oh, so the power washing already is done. Okay, all right.
Yeah, we had to get that done before.
Yeah.
The haunted house stuff.
What do you guys think about adding here, anything about cameras?
That could be another article we add, or we could just use that for Town Hall repairs and upgrades.
Yeah, we're gonna have some, some money.
It's probably the best way.
Article Three, um, will have some money for, for some upgrades. We could do cameras.
Cameras would be a good thing. Speaking of, where is the light truck?
Light truck?
The, the little truck thing with the lights on it? It's not out there.
It's in the highway garage.
Okay.
We're fixing it.
Okay.
Oh, 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 I wasn't sure what you meant, the light truck.
It's very light.
Yeah, I'm like, yeah, I didn't notice it out there either.
Yeah, it's like, oh, boy.
Somebody already took it.
It's in a safe place.
Okay, good. That's all I'm concerned about. Didn't walk somewhere that.
So Article Eight, you guys good with it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Article Nine, to see if the town will vote to transfer from facilities custodian salary to the sum of fourteen thousand to the Shepherd Building expense line to cover the cost of cleaning services or to take any relative action thereto.
This will cover cleaning services until, uh, the week of, uh, the special town meeting.
You guys good with that?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Article Ten, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of four thousand to purchase one electrical speed sign for the town or to take any act, relative action thereto. And FinCom, uh, would like more information on this. This is for the speed sign, and I think we were looking at South Street for this one, to put this one up there for South Street permanently because of the speeding problem that we have for the schools.
Yeah.
So, and I find myself, I, I do it too, everybody on that road, you just feel like you need to go faster than what the posted speed limit is. And to have that sign, because I know down over here, it gets me too, and I'm like, you see that flashing, and you're like, oh, slow down.
Sixty-seven?
Yeah.
Yeah, totally helps.
Slow down, and you're like, all right.
Yep.
You know, because you, you're coming from fifty miles an hour to thirty-five.
Yeah.
You know, again, South Street, another street that just, it's a big, wide-open road. Unfortunately, there's a school right there, so having a speed sign there would be a great help.
Which way do you have it, going south or north?
Thought when, last time we talked, we were looking at getting three of them.
Oh.
Because we're looking at getting one for both sides.
Yeah, we think.
Both directions.
Yeah.
On South Street, and then there was another one, I don't know, were you talking about how there was another one that was supposed to be?
There are too many places.
There was another area?
I mean, we, we, we get ten, and we will use all ten.
Well, another, a problem area.
So we have it on both sides of six-seven, sixty-seven, we have it on, well, both ends of town.
By the Senior Center.
Senior Center was the other one.
We're looking at by the Senior Center going the other way because we having people speeding coming up to the lights.
Yeah.
Oh, really? Cause there's one at the end of town, so when you're coming into town after like Dippin' Donuts, there's one.
Now, one on the other direction, just after the lights.
Oh, just after the lights, okay.
Somewhere over there.
Yeah.
Cause, you know, when I.
Is there one by the Dippin' Donuts?
Well, when you're getting into town, when it goes to thirty miles an hour, there's one.
Yeah, there's one over there.
It's.
Cause I think they were looking more in the center, because that's where really you're having a lot of accidents, right, Adam?
Yeah, that's where the.
That's a good place for it, honestly.
Because there's a lot of speeding that's right there.
Post offices and people stopping, cars just kept going.
I think at the time of the discussion, it was, uh, thought that these signs were like fifteen hundred dollars apiece. Um, after looking at it and when going into the accountant's office, they're about thirty-eight hundred dollars apiece.
Oh.
We can shop a little bit.
I mean, if you wanna get the same type that you had before, yeah.
Well, they, they went up twice as much?
No, that's what they were always.
Well, we, last time we asked for seven thousand dollars, and we got three, and we have leftover like six hundred dollars.
I think it was through a grant they got them originally, no?
No, that was my, my article, kind of thing, yeah.
Did we get some through ARPA or CARES Act, though?
No, no, there were just three new signs.
Okay.
We had one.
I thought, I thought we used ARPA money for it, though, right?
I don't remember where it came from, but I don't think it was ARPA. It was before that. Yeah, we voted at a town meeting, because they asked, why is not the police doing that? And David, you said, well, because we wanna, you know, make everybody safe at the same time, you know?
Police did get one, I believe.
From Coparts.
Or two from Coparts.
From Coparts, that's a, that's a.
They got donations for one.
Yeah, and the other ones were at a town meeting.
Yes.
Yeah. So what do you wanna do? Do you wanna just do one this time, or do you wanna add two or three?
Well, if they are thirty-eight now, I don't, I think we can get them cheaper, but if we get with four thousand, we only get one. Last time we did seven thousand dollars, and you can double-check on the article, if we do the same this year, it's like.
They might've gone up, too.
They might, yeah, I'm sure.
Cause you gotta remember, I think we had to allocate more money to the police department because didn't Jerry come in because he didn't have fasteners to put him on?
Yeah.
He had to get special fasteners to put on the pole and.
Yeah.
Different things like that, too. And then we have one sign that doesn't have the solar panel because there's one that they have to keep on charging, I believe.
That's the one Coparts gave.
Okay, cause the ones we have have the solar panels.
Definitely want that.
We want those ones because we don't wanna have to keep on charging the thing, taking it down, putting it back up.
So why don't we just hold that number for there now? I can, we can do some homework and do shopping around and see what the number is and.
Yeah, I think they want more money, but do we wanna get two or three, or just one?
I'll get three.
Honestly, we need South Street. That was, that's one of our biggest problems. And then right in front of the Senior Center, because there's accidents there all the time. So I could think of three right offhand.
Then let's do three, I guess.
So let's move it up to three signs.
Okay.
And we'll look at the number for that.
Ray, what do you think about that?
Is it appropriate? I, I'll wait for comments and questions, but I'll, I'll speak now if it's okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Well, I just wanna, I just wanna ask the efficacy of these things. Rather, other than personal anecdotal, like you just said, Dave, that it's a good reminder to you because. Like the one, the one on South, uh, South Bridge. It's just, it, I know the posted speed limit's twenty-five, and I know posted speed limits are supposed to, posted speed limits, but if you're going twenty-five at that sign, you're, you're crawling. Nobody goes twenty-five there.
I do.
Okay, all right. I, when I say nobody, I literally mean nobody. But you're going twenty-five there, Derek, because you live there.
Right.
I mean, you're, you're, right, I go twenty-five at my place, too, cause I'm turning in. But you, you, you watch, you, you come down South Bridge and look at your speed, and I guarantee you'll be going between twenty-five and thirty, if not thirty, thirty-five. I'm not, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to advocate for speeding, I'm simply saying, what's the, what do we know, how do we, there's no data collection on these things, and so how do we know whether they're efficacious?
There is data.
There is data.
Yeah, there is data, yeah.
Okay, so what happens, who, who has the data and what's being done with the data?
The chief of police has the data, and he may use, utilizes the data, so if he notices trends.
Right.
It will show trends when people going faster.
Right.
So between seven P M. and nine P M., he's had eight people go.
Right.
Fifteen, twenty miles above the speed limit.
Okay.
Between that time, so now he can allocate a police officer there to sit there and.
Okay, that makes.
Do proactive enforcement, so not as it just flashing at you and saying, hey, slow down.
Right.
But now he has the data to sit there and say, okay, I'm gonna have a guy there.
That's helpful to know that there's data. We didn't, there was a supposition that there wasn't any data collection.
No, there's data collection.
If there's data collection, that's helpful, because then.
It doesn't take down, it doesn't take down your plate or anything, it just tells the time and the speed.
Right.
Yeah.
And then the, and then law enforcement can, can act on that information. That, that's helpful to know. So then the other issue would simply be is, it's, it's quite an expense for something that could be, if, if you can see a trend at, over a four, six-week period, you, law enforcement knows to act on that. Then why couldn't the current three signs be relocated to other hotspots or suspected hotspots to get trends, and then they could, they could be rotated?
Cause it's always new people. It's not the same person. It, just because you get the one person at one time doesn't mean it's not gonna be somebody new again and again.
But there's not that many new people. I mean, I understand.
No.
Look, if there, look, we could have, we could have twenty of these, and it wouldn't be enough.
Right.
Because they're speeding everywhere, and we know that.
Well, the problem is, is to put them in areas that are really problem areas.
No, I understand.
And, and to, i- i- it's a tool, because we can't hire enough police officers to be out there all the time.
Right.
And these help assist law enforcement to do their job, and it's also a reminder for anybody driving, too. Because when you see that thing flash.
No, I understand.
Everybody slows down, and they're like, oh, yeah, I'm going fast.
But once it's been there for two months, you're acclimated to it, and you're, you're basically like saying, every time I go down South Bridge, I'm not going twenty-five, and I'm not gonna go twenty-five.
That's when the.
And if I get a ticket, I get a ticket and all that. I'm not, I'm not advocating to go forty or anything like that, I'm just saying. You, you go twenty-five, you, you, you have to really try to go twenty-five.
I'll have to say, I, I do do twenty-five when I see it, cause I, I, I'll see it flash, and I'll slow down.
Okay.
Because I, I don't want to.
I, I think those who are inclined, and maybe I'm admitting I'm one of those people, those who are inclined to speed, and not that I am, but those who are inclined to speed, they're gonna dismiss that flashing thirty-three. They're gonna dismiss that.
And it's gonna build data on the time.
Yep.
In the days that you're driving through there, and then we have a police officer just sit there and wait during those times.
Yeah, so then that's a conversation I can have with police chief to follow up to.
Yeah.
But I was just questioning the efficacy of it, knowing that there's data collection, that helps a little bit, so that's all I have to say.
And, and if it, if it stops a few people from getting into accidents, it's worth it. You know, especially, you know, you got, you got, um, your areas like where the Senior Center is. There's a lot of accidents over there, and people should be slowing down and doing the speed limit, but people don't. And this will help identify, you know, the times, and it reminds people, you know? It, it really does work, and I, I see even the one on sixty-seven, I see people slow down for that thing all the time.
Yeah, that's.
And, and it, it's worth its money. You know, if you can get some people slowing down before they come into town.
Especially.
Just by a sign, and it didn't cost any manpower, you know? And it prevented somebody from getting into an accident or somebody getting hit by a car.
Yeah.
You know, the town's doing its due diligence to make the town safer, and these things, they do it. You know, and if you don't slow down, it records your information. Well, not your information, but.
Yeah, it, right, that.
So, so every day at three fifteen, Ray blows through South Bridge Road.
I'm just, I, I hit it, and it says twenty-eight, and I'm like, I'm crawling here.
I think you're okay at twenty.
Twenty-eight.
No, I, I, I know, but it's still, it, it, to be honest, I just disregard it because I know I'm driving safely, and I know that I'm not gonna get a ticket, and I, I don't know, I just think, I think, well, anyway, I'm.
You just cursed yourself, you know? You said, I know I'm not gonna get a ticket.
I, I think rotating the ones we've got, I don't think, I don't think getting six of them is necessary, but that's, that's, I've said my piece, that's. It's good to know there's data collection. I can follow up with the chief, so.
You guys good?
Yeah, I just wanna clarify, I slow down on that one and every other one I do tell.
Yeah.
Not only because I live over there.
And it's not just because, you know, to be honest.
Your merit badges are in the mail.
Excellent.
Yeah, I don't wanna be that guy, you know?
No, I understand, I, I understand.
I, I've done enough stupid things already.
All right, so good with that. All right, Article Eleven, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of twenty-five thousand to commission a management assessment study for the Quabog Regional School District as approved by, at the May ninth, two thousand and twenty-three annual town meeting or take any action relative thereto. So that's just an estimate is the twenty-five thousand.
Right, so I. I did have a, a conversation today, uh, FinCom, we had met on Tuesday night. Um, I did have a conversation today with a representative from the Collins Institute, um, in the Collins Center. Uh, and they are the ones really that would, would tackle something like this. They've done these in the past, they, they have experience. Um, she had indicated to me on the phone today that, you know, a number, a budgetary number to use would be more around the line of thirty thousand dollars now. So, um, you know, but with the caveat that, you know, when we had this pretty lengthy conversation today, um, that it's important to also have the regional school district, um, you know, level of participation in this process. Um, so if this, um, and to have access to, you know, um, staff. Staff interviewing, uh, data collections. So it's, it's, it's critically important that the town and the school district. You know, develop a scope of work or scope of what they're trying to get accomplished together. And, and, and be agreeable to that in order to make this study an effective study. Um, she had indicated that, you know, many a times that the re, you know, there's been regional school districts. Out there that don't wanna cooperate with these, you know, types of studies.
No.
And, and, and it's a waste of everybody's time and it would be a waste of the town's money.
Yeah.
To do this. So, um, she had suggested, you know, reaching out to, um. To Quabog, uh, in the school committee, uh, to, you know, to, to discuss the, um, you know, this type of proposition.
Yeah, they already made it clear they don't wanna do it.
Would we try and bring in Westbrookfield, the town of?
And that's the thing, we could probably split this cost with Westbrookfield.
Well, uh, uh, the last conversation I had with Westbrookfield, they said that they didn't really have any funds available for anything, but. Um, you know, I don't know if maybe they would agree to it, uh, you know, uh, on paper that it's a good idea. I doubt that they would have any funds available to do it.
Oh, they, they're pretty good at handing out money over there, so.
Easy.
So. The town voted, the town said yes, we would like to see this. Yeah, I, I'm, I'm thinking, it's not really their choice. It'd be nice to have their, their, their input and their buy into it, but they're not gonna buy into it. Cause they've already made that clear to us that they won't participate in something like this. So. You know, if it's thirty thousand dollars, let's move it to thirty thousand dollars and still start moving forward with it. And if the school. Fights us on it.
I mean, at, at worst case scenario, we can try to proceed with it, reserve the money.
Mm-hmm.
And then if we know that this is not gonna work, the money, you know, will re-release the article and it'll go back to free cash.
Right. But at least we put the money there to allocate and get ready for it. Because we need to know that information. We have to have this information. We need to know what's going on over there.
So are we gonna do thirty?
That's what's the budgetary number she told me to use.
So this would change to thirty.
Are you good with that Derek?
Yeah, it's a vote. Could we just?
So thirty?
Yeah, thirty's okay.
Alright. And then, so we're all good with eleven. Um, Article twelve, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one thousand. Uh, to selectmen information technology account to fund additional email accounts. Or take any action there relative to, is this so like the veterans council account and all that?
Yeah, so, um, when we budgeted for IT, we budgeted right, right to the number for no, no additional. Uh, subscriptions. So this would allow us for additional subscriptions, additional access to, uh, if somebody wanted, needed. Word or Excel or, or, or something like that nature, uh, we would have some money to buy some subscriptions through the year.
Okay. You good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a must.
Okay, Article thirteen, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of one thousand six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy cents. To Architectural Insights Inc. For prior fiscal year bills. For the town hall window replacement project or to take any relative there action to. And why are we paying them money?
There are bills that have been, um, uh, sitting around since twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. That have not been paid, uh, for the window replacement project.
Because we stopped the project.
Yeah, but they were, I guess, this, this work was supposedly done and is owed to Architectural Insights. That's, we have the bills here.
I'm pretty sure they were good. We didn't owe them any more money. And we stopped that project because. Again, they were worried about moving around any of the brick because they were worried about the walls falling down. And then finding out there was asbestos there too.
Well, so is this a bill that didn't get paid or this is a bill they submitted late?
This is a bill that didn't get paid.
See, that's.
So these bills are dating from, uh, October thirty-first, twenty twenty.
Yeah.
Um, January thirty-first, twenty-one.
What's the bill's for?
Um, looks like design work, principal CAD. Looks like some, for some design, architectural work.
And where did?
Bill March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
That should have been in the initial part of the project right off the bat. Why are they building, billing us after the fact?
Uh, well, these bills were supposedly sent in twenty and twenty-one and then they resent us a bill. End of May of this year for, for those bills. Which equal one thousand six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy cents. These are for, um. You know, uh, principal CAD. This, this has gotta be for design work, design services.
So.
Some plans of some sort? Did you have them do plans back then?
I don't really know. That was before my time.
No, all this, all this was taken care of. We don't owe them any money. They, they, and, and anything that they debate as far as the architect. All this was taken care of already.
Okay.
You know, we stopped that project and they, they stopped the project because they didn't feel safe moving on the, the other side of the building.
Well, these are not the installers. These are the.
No.
Design professionals.
Right, and everything was going through them.
Oh, okay.
So, I'd like to know exactly what, what they're trying to say we owe them for because they were already paid.
Okay.
I, yeah, we definitely need to get more information on that.
We can hold on that.
So. Big question mark on that one because I don't think we owe them the money.
Okay.
Alright, so to see, Article fourteen, to see if the town will vote to, um. Appropriate from the cable advisory fund, the sum of two thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars and ten cents to pay Valley Communications. For prior fiscal year bills for the purchase of audio and video equipment or take any action relative thereto. Guys, good with that?
Um, again.
It's their money.
That's what I was gonna say, it's their money.
The cable?
Yeah.
Well, I just don't understand why are we paying these old bills? There's three of them here. It's kinda like, what the heck happened?
Article fourteen?
Yeah.
But it, it's their money. It's coming.
Travis is on his way. Article thirteen, like.
Oh, thirteen.
If you're owed sixteen hundred dollars, why wouldn't you send an invoice every month? Right, like why?
I don't, I don't think we owe them that money. I think they raided us out and then sent the, a bill to see if they can get more money from us after we.
Yeah.
And, and then the same with this, okay, so what's this Valley Communications and why?
So there, there were two bills. One of them was like right when I started. They mail, they snail mailed their bills. Um, had like the completely wrong address, so we never initially got it. And the second bill was for stuff we had ordered, um, when we replaced our cameras. Um, they, we had ordered batteries to go with like the camera top monitor. Batteries they ordered weren't compatible. So there was a lot of back and forth with them. To try to get the right batteries and then take the old ones back. Um, I had really hard time getting ahold of them. And finally, after like fifteen attempts of. Hey, you know what's going on? I, I told them, we can't pay the bill because I can't use these batteries. We need to return them. They stopped responding and a couple of months ago, they reached out about both of the bills. Um, the first one, that was from before, right when I started. I did all the research, made sure, I checked with, um, the town accountant, the bill wasn't paid. I made sure the equipment that was listed on it, they actually got me the serial numbers. I made sure we actually received that equipment. We do have the equipment that was included on it. So it is bills that we owe. Um, why they weren't reaching out to us sooner and one of the bills, they waited over a year. That I, I don't know. I'm assuming just really bad accounting practices on their part.
I mean, the other thing is they should have just canceled that invoice and redid an invoice for the current, like, you know, last month or something.
Right, it's.
Right, I mean.
The one of the re, so that last order we had, that was when they basically told us, well, we're getting out of dealing with, um. The cable, the cable channels because we're focusing on all other parts of our business. I'm like, kinda makes sense, so. Um, we, we don't even plan on using them anymore for, for a supplier.
Okay. Alright, you good?
Yeah.
You good? Fourteen?
I, I am, I am good. I'm, I'm just, you know, I can see people on the meetings, you know. Frustrated because we're taking all this time and so little numbers.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Well, number thirteen, I'm like curious because we got a bill from two thousand, two thousand one.
Yeah, that's a different issue.
Twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty.
So we're looking at two years ago before they decide to send us a bill again.
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't make any sense.
That doesn't make sense.
I'm not sure.
And I, I, I'm pretty sure we don't owe them anything. So, I'd really like to know what that money's for. What are they saying? We owe them for. Because we squared that up. We actually, because we paid for the windows, we own the windows that are there and we're good. Everything's all set.
I can tell you that from the research that the town accountant did, uh, those invoices. Uh, were not in the system, so they weren't, it wasn't like they were paid. Um, so.
No, it's like they're sitting in the new, you know, whatever, but we didn't owe them. Cause they, they never came after us. They never said anything about it. So two years later.
Yeah, that, it doesn't make any sense.
Alright, anyways, fifteen. Uh, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of eleven thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. To pay the following prior fiscal years invoices, Barton and LuGuis.
LuJudas.
LuJudas LLC for landfill monitoring wells and PFAS analysis dated. May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three in the amount of ten thousand five hundred and sixty dollars. For engineering services and facility inspections dated May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three in the amount of. One thousand two hundred and ten dollars. And these bills were not paid on time due to the accounting error by the vendor. Or take any action relative thereto. So why are we? They're not charging a late fee for these, are they?
No.
Because if it was their accounting error, that's theirs, they suck up.
So prior to, uh, prior to town meeting, um, Jessica had emailed the, uh, company. Um, and asked if there was any outstanding bills. At that time, there were none. Um, and so, two weeks later, she gets a bill. For, uh, these, uh, for this, uh, services. And she said that she had asked if there was any bills and. There were none at that time that were generated. There were still some that were in the system. That have not been posted for, for, for sending out for, for payment. So. Um, it's a, it's a bad accounting system for Barton and LuJudas, um, but the town. Um, owes the money.
Would, don't we have till July fifteenth to pay prior fiscal year bills?
Uh, we do. Um, I'm not sure why they were, they, it wasn't brought up beforehand.
Yeah.
Okay. You good?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Article sixteen, to see if the town will vote to raise. And appropriate the sum of three hundred dollars to the animal inspector's salary to cover. The additional costs or inspections for months of October, November and December. Or take any, uh, uh, relative action thereto. I recuse myself from this article. But you guys.
I'm fine with it. I'm okay with the article. I, I just go back to the same thing. So many little things that people just don't like going to the town meeting because of these things that we could take care of ourselves. Or we can't.
We, we can't.
We can't, that's it.
There's, there wasn't enough money in the budget to cover these, these months for additional work, uh, that's gonna be required of the animal inspector.
Move on.
Okay. Can I go back to fifteen real quick?
Yes.
Are you guys all set with sixteen?
Yes. The last sentence needs to be rewritten.
Okay, how, how would you like it?
Well, you can't say these bills were not paid on time due to an accounting error by the vendor or take any relative action thereto. It's gotta somehow be.
Okay.
That, or take any action is gotta be part of the main.
Okay.
Uh, motion.
Maybe we'll just take the, the, that, 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 that action of these bills and, and the board of health can explain it on the floor.
Yeah, or just make that the very last sentence.
Okay, alright.
Without the, uh, relative action.
Okay. Sounds good. We'll take care of that.
Okay.
Okay, on to seventeen. To see if the town will vote to transfer twelve thousand six hundred and two dollars and ninety-five cents from receipts. Reserved for appropriations highway equipment fund to purchase a hopper sweeper. For five thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-five cents and a forty-eight inch V blade plow. For, for six thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars and sixty cents or take any action relative thereto, highway department.
There's appropriate funds available for the purchases.
Okay, you guys good with that?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay, eighteen, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of four thousand to Beaver Removal Line. For additional beaver removal services or to take any action relative thereto.
Currently, there's three thousand dollars in the beaver removal line. We'll bump it up to another four thousand after speaking with Jeremy.
November first trapping season starts.
Nice.
We have two trappers lined up and ready to go. So, we're gonna hit them hard.
All time.
Yes.
Get rid of some of those beavers.
Yes.
Alright.
I'm good with it.
I'm good with it.
I am good.
Alright. Okay, Article nineteen, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of forty-nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. To purchase a new Ford Police Interceptor. Or, and to trade in a two thousand twenty Ford Police Interceptor. With over approximately a hundred and four thousand miles on it, which is currently at the end of its useful life or take any action related, related to. Okay. Just getting a new cruiser, getting rid of the old one, right?
Mm-hmm.
I'm good with it. You just gotta.
I'm waiting on the trading value.
To adjust that number.
Yes.
Alright. I don't know how much value we're gonna get for trading for a hundred and four thousand miles on it. We may owe them money trying to get rid of it. Are you good with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then Article twenty, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three thousand. Eight hundred and ninety-five dollars to cover the fallen costs associated with the new police line, police hire. Of three thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars to be added to police salary line. For a new hire starting at step four. And three hundred and sixty dollars to be added to the supplemental salary, salary line. To cover the extra educational incentive costs or take any action relative thereto. Yes. For our cop. Our new hire, good?
Yeah, I am good.
Article twenty-one, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of four hundred thousand to the fire engine number one capital stabilization account. The town has already appropriated six thou- appropriated two hundred thousand towards the replacement of the fire engine one or to take any action relative there to. This will pay off the fire truck, right?
Yes, we're hoping to have a total, there's another article that's tied to this, but we're hoping to have a total of six hundred and fifty thousand to replace engine one outbreak. Engine one is a nineteen ninety-seven tanker in West Warren that's pretty much at the end of its useful life. If we don't replace it soon, it's gonna need respring, you know, it's gonna have to have all those springs and it just, it's not worth putting that kinda money into that vehicle that was nineteen ninety-seven.
Hmm, good?
Yeah.
Gotta have good fire equipment.
Of course.
Alright, Article twenty-two, to see if the town will transfer, well, will vote to transfer from regional dispatch the sum of fifty thousand to the fire engine number one capitally capital stabilization account. This would complete the purchase of the fire engine number one or take any action relative there to. And I'm good with that, right?
Yes, sir.
Just the second part of that.
Yeah, again, how these, yeah, and again, how these are worded.
Yeah, we can do clean up some of them.
Yeah, the explanation part can be at the end, but it that that phrase, that legal phrase. Yeah, I'm good with it.
You're good with the substance though, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And you're good with it, Derek?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, Article twenty-three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifteen thousand to the advanced life support expense line to cover additional advanced life support calls or take any action relative there to. Okay, you guys good with that?
Yes.
This is. Because you get more calls.
That I can't, I have no control over, it depends on call volume, it depends on severity of the calls and we've already been hit really hard in the first couple of months of the fiscal year, so we're behind where I would like to be in that line item, so I know that as the year plays out, this'll just help us cushion that and get it back to where it needs to be and and hopefully I don't have to come back for any transfers further down the line, that's the that's the goal here.
Okay.
You okay with fifteen?
Yeah, I mean, I think fifteen is reasonable where we're at right now, we've had a co- another month, this last month where things have quieted down a little bit in the sense that we haven't had as many of those fees come in, yep, so we're we're trying to balance it all out again. It's just an unpredictable line item, it's nothing that I can I can say it's gonna be this or this and you know, it it's just one of those I have to watch month to month and, you know, I'd like to, just because of where we are right now, I'd like to get ahead of the game so that we don't have to do it later on, cause I think that I I can estimate we're gonna need at least that to kinda even out the budget.
Okay, you guys good with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I would anticipate, um Mr. Chairman, um and I just spoke to uh Chief Lavoy about this, um that Articles twenty-one and twenty-two, um because there there may be a um a an opportunity for us to possibly maybe get a truck relatively soon and this would complete the project, there may be a a a a a sentence added to one of these or an article within itself uh releasing the money from from these lines to 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 go out and purchase the actual truck.
Absolutely.
I'd I'd like to add something if we can because, you know, um you know, these trucks are hard to get, chassis are very still hard to get, you know, Jeremy knows that.
Before it goes up another hundred thousand.
Every year they're going up fifteen percent or more, so the faster we do this, the better, so if we can get a truck ordered and and get it done, that uh it's it's better off. I'd rather release the money immediately so that we can start working on it as opposed to waiting another six months till May and we have, we're kinda dead in the water. If we can put a contract together and find it and do it right through procurement and stuff, I'd rather just get it done and not waste another six months. Probably need another article like like twenty-two A or something, just stick it after the other.
They just all renumber.
Yeah.
But the substance of the articles are there. Alright. Onto number twenty-four, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition petition the general court for the enactment of special legislation entitled the Act Authorization authorizing the town of Warren to continue the employment of Stephen Perkins to set forth below, provided however that the general court shall be authorized to make ministerial, um clerical and editorial changes of form only to s- said bill unless the Board of Selectmen approves amendments to the bill before the enactment by the general court and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to approve such amendments or take any action relative there to. This is to keep your guy on past the age limit, right?
Firefighter that just recently turned sixty-five in Massachusetts, both police and fire. Uh have to, there's a mandatory retirement at sixty-five, uh Mr. Perkins has been a call firefighter for forty-four years. Um he's been on, he's the longest serving other than Dennis, we had done this once before for Dennis DeRozia. Uh he'd like to serve another few years, um he's in great physical shape to do that. Um you know, this would come with certain stipulations that I've discussed with Jim in terms of physicals and stuff like that, but as long as the board is is okay with it, town council, the insurance company, I'd like to put that article together to allow him to continue for another few years before his retirement for the fire department.
And this has to go under town meeting?
Yes.
It actually is a, it's an actual law that's enacted, it's signed by the governor themselves to allow it to happen. So we petitioned our our local legislators, they put a bill forward and then eventually it works its way through the senate and house and then signed, it's an actual law enacted by the governor himself to allow that person to continue.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought Smola said he would move this forward?
Um I haven't, but we we were just wanting to make sure that it was, the town was good with it and the selectmen first, I mean, it would go, we would, the board would then petitions Mr. Uh you know, Representative Smola to then take it that step further after that. But I will make sure I speak with him, right now, we're just trying to clear it through the process to make sure that, you know, insurance company and everything else is good with it liability wise and everything, it's one of those things that, you know, we wanna make sure we cross our t's and dot our i's on that first.
The town council and the in Maya have not weighed in on this yet, so we're just.
Okay.
I'm good with the substance of it.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. As long as they're okay, then we can move forward, okay?
Hey. Yeah, if the chief vouches for him, I know he's not gonna take that lightly.
I I mean, like I said, he's a, he's he's a very strong individual, I mean, it, I don't worry about his physical shape or anything like that and he's been on for so long, he would just like to go for another few years. I'm I'm fine with it as long as, you know, the liability side of things are 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 taken care of and and there's no, you know, red flags there that there could be a problem for the town, so as long as they're okay, you know, I I fully support it.
Good, thanks, Steve. Okay, Article twenty-five, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of two thousand one hundred dollars to the treasurer's expense line for the purchase of a new filing cabinet and accessories for the treasurer's office to replace non-functional unsafe filing cabinet or to take any action relative there to.
Yes.
I'm good with it.
I am good, I'm still trying to.
You figure.
I'm trying to come up with.
We have a line item to be able to purchase supplies for offices.
She does, but it's doesn't cover it.
This is too expensive, right?
None of these items have been, were were thought about during the budget, so, I mean, their expense lines would would be exhausted if if this wasn't done.
Okay. Alright, we're all good with that, right?
Yes.
Alright, Article twenty-six, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of seventy-two thousand nine hundred dollars to pay off the debt issued from the highway backhoe pursuant to the Article um number sixteen on May eleventh, two thousand twenty-one annual town meeting or take any action relative there to, paying off our debt.
Early.
Yep.
And saving on interest.
Yeah.
So not only are we banking money, we're paying off our old debt too.
Mm-hmm.
I'm liking this. You guys good with that?
Yes, sir.
You good with that?
Yes.
Jeremy, you're good with it?
I'm paying off, like I was just thinking, I'm thinking of all the next round of stuff we'll be buying maybe next year, so.
Alright, we're good with that. Um and FinCom, I'm, they definitely happy with us paying off debt, right? Okay, Article twenty-seven, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars to the assessor expense line for the following unanticipated FY twenty-four expenses, seven hundred for assessors and assistant assessor continuing education and certification training, three hundred and fifty dollars for annual multiple listing service subscription and five hundred for mileage expense or take any action relative there to. Okay.
Five hundred for mileage?
Yeah.
So, um as an expense line, right? Um departments, if they have mileage e- e- expenses, uh can submit for reimbursement for use of their personal vehicle. It's, I think it's sixty-two or sixty-five cents a mile right now is the federal rate. Um and this is for the assessors for when they go out to different properties throughout town and drive their personal vehicles to assess properties. It could be.
Would it be probably more appropriate for us to just purchase a town vehicle for multi-department use? Hmm, or is that, or is that just gonna be more money to do than just pay the?
Um I I would, I would imagine that 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 would probably be more money, with insurance and gas and.
And then fighting over.
Yeah, who 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 gets to drive it.
And then you have maintenance.
Maintenance.
Yeah. Five hundred.
I'm just looking at a cheaper way of doing it, because if we could purchase like a in in inexpensive vehicle or get a grant for like a a hybrid vehicle, you know, maybe, maybe a police department's hybrid hybrid vehicle that they they have, which is not a good thing for a police department. Um and use that as as a town vehicle, throw the town of Warren's sale on it and say, this is what you guys are gonna use when you go out, you do your inspections, use that. Yes, sir.
Jeremy, how many miles do we have, road we have?
We have about sixty-four miles. That's our, that's not including the state miles that run through town.
So five hundred dollars is good for over eight hundred miles.
A few trips around town.
Divided sixty-four.
And it's only once a year, right?
Right, right.
So I mean, if they.
Versus spending five hundred dollars a month.
No, right, and if they, if they don't use the full five hundred, then it comes back to free cash.
Alright, I'm just trying to look at different ways of, whatever's cheaper for the town, so.
Alright. And the three fifty for MLS, why wasn't that in their budget? Because that's something that they would.
It's my understanding um that um MLS was a, has been never was a subscription for the town, I think they always used one of the assessors uh access to MLS, so I think the, one of the assessors probably got tired of, you know, sharing that access, I don't, I don't know.
So one of the assessors was probably a real estate agent and using their.
Correct.
Hmm, okay.
Makes sense. Probably shouldn't be doing that in the first place.
Probably shouldn't be doing it.
So we're correcting something that probably shouldn't be going on. Alright, you guys good? Twenty-seven?
Yes.
Alright, twenty-eight, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five, Clause thirty-seven A, to adjust Clause thirty-seven eligibility requirements as follows to become effective one um two thousand twenty-three for the additional, for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four tax billing or take any action relative there to. Change in, change in clause, change from thirty-seven to thirty-seven A. Exemption amount, increase exemption from four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents to five hundred dollars. Okay, that was a whole lot of just increasing it to five hundred dollars.
Right, so this would allow for uh people uh uh to have more access to use this abatements and exemptions um with the increase. Um again, town council has not reviewed this yet. Um if you're okay with the adoption of of this, of of the increase, then uh we could have town council review it further.
Yeah, it gives the ability for people to claim five hundred, five hundred dollars, right?
Right.
Versus four hundred and thirty-seven, so it gives them a better opportunity.
Right.
I'm good with that?
Okay.
I'm good with that?
Yes, sir.
Alright, so we're good with the language somewhat?
Okay.
Well, the.
The concept.
The concept of it, yeah. Once legal, legal is gonna do the legalese in there and adjust things, but we're voting on the concept of it.
The idea of it, yeah.
The idea of it, yeah. So we're good. Alright, um Article twenty-nine, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Chapter one eighty-four, Section eighty-one of the Acts of two thousand two, amending Massachusetts General Law fifty-nine, Section five, Clause forty-one C to adjust Clause forty-one C eligibility requirements as follows to become effective July one, two thousand twenty-three for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four tax billing or take any action relative there to, that's another one from the Board of Assessors. And that's to uh minimum age reduce to sixty-five from seventy, seventy years of age, so we're reducing the age, okay? And gross receipt limit, single resident increase from thirteen thousand to sixteen thousand five hundred, married joint in residence increase from fifteen thousand to twenty-two thousand five hundred. And assess, assess asset limits, single resident increase from twenty-eight thousand to thirty-four thousand, married joint residence increase from thirty thousand to forty thousand, forty-two thousand five hundred. Okay.
So these would allow for more eligibility uh for people. Uh their eligibility age would be reduced down to sixty-five. The uh income, uh gross income limits would increase and the assets would increase for essentially allowing uh more eligibility for the use of this program.
Okay, and that's just going in guidance with the Mass General Law, right?
Correct.
So it's bringing us in alignment with what what is already law.
Right.
You good with that?
Sure.
Good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, Article thirty, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of fourteen hundred dollars to the account accountant expense line for an accounting educational training course or take any action relative therefore, and that's the town accountant. Training, you good, you guys agree with that?
Yeah.
Training's fine.
Good?
Yep.
Article thirty-one. Bylaw change to add position of town administrator to capital planning committee.
We'll get the exact verbiage uh from town council.
Good with that?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Good with it? Okay, good. Uh Article thirty-two, bylaw change for free dog license to individuals seventy years or older.
I don't necessarily know that you'd have to have an article for this. Um I I feel as though that the Board of Selectmen uh have the authority to set the dog rate, you know, to set fees uh for the town clerk. So I'm gonna have legal look at.
Why is this presented by us? Because this is the first time I'm hearing of it.
It was on Karen's list.
Yeah, I don't ever remember.
I never talked about this.
I I it was, it was on her list, I I don't know.
Do you remember it?
I was surprised at it myself, so.
Yeah, I I have no clue about this, I don't even know why it's on there.
I have no idea, I mean, we could take it off.
Or make it sixty years.
Well, no, I don't even know why it's even, we don't even have to have our article, let's put a question mark about that and get more information.
Yeah.
Why that was added there or what what the background is, because I don't remember talking about that.
Where are the fees defined? Do we know? There's the dog control law, but I don't see.
Well, the fees we establish and then they post it. Same thing with planning board.
So they wouldn't be in the bylaw?
No.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so this may be out.
Yeah, that might be might have to drop that one because I don't even know why that's there.
I think if the town, if the selectman wanted to change the fees, they could. They don't need a.
Right.
Uh, an article.
Yeah, I don't know why it was even added though because we never even talked about that. So article thirty three to see if the town will vote to remove the town of Warren personal bylaws. Section two, management rights subsection C. By deleting the entire portion shown in strikeout or take any actu- action relative thereto. And that would strike out all persons not under civil service employment. And paid by the town as laborers, trucking equipment operators, custodians or any town. Building, police officer, electrical. Cler- clerical, well, struck out there. Clerical workers. And administrative or management employees shall be residents of the town. Or shall reside in a community. Within fifteen miles of the boundary. We already voted on this.
I think it was somewhere else in the bylaws.
This is in the personnel bylaw. We voted on the general bylaw.
Town bylaw.
So it was it was in two places?
Yes.
It was in two places.
That's stupid.
It is, yeah, so.
So this is a clerical fix?
Correct.
Yeah.
Alright. Yeah, town already voted to to deal away with it in the general bylaw. So it's it's a no brainer then.
Yeah.
Alright, I'm good with it.
I'm good.
That's it.
Alright. So yeah, we just had a couple. Article thirteen, we need more review on. And then. We're gonna get better prices on article ten. And article thirty two. We need some explanation why that was even added here because none of us ever talked about it or brought it up.
Yeah.
So, and we don't even think it needs to be in there.
There were some other things that were on uh Karen's list as well. It's just gonna take some time. To figure out um some more background information on some pricing and different things. I know that the board had mentioned a few different projects, but this is something that maybe capital planning can be looking at in our capital budget. Um, upcoming year, we can look at some of these and have these reflected in the annual town meeting.
Yeah, I know we're looking at adding flags. For the center of town, putting them on the posts. And then we're looking at doing a cleanup of the bridge.
Right.
Downtown, but now that. That's come up because new developments on that, that there is actual lead paint in there. So now we would have to look at how we can encapsulate the paint or if it has to be removed. And that would increase costs way beyond.
So in that list laptop or computer for the veterans agent, did we?
So I I I have an idea for that. Um, my idea is that um we have some money left over in a grant from the Vadar grant. Um, and I had, I didn't speak to uh the Department of Local Services directly. But there was a person that spoke to the deputy commissioner uh on my behalf. And said that we may be able to use some of those extra grant funds to get a laptop.
Okay.
And so the laptop that I currently have doesn't have Word, doesn't have Excel. Um, I would really need Word and Excel on on the laptop uh for using it at home.
Yeah.
Um, so maybe uh if the board thought it was okay, I could give the laptop that I currently have to the veterans agent. And then if if the state is okay with using the extra grant money for the laptop for the town. Then we could purchase a new laptop with grant money that wouldn't cost anything.
Okay.
Okay.
Good with that? Good with that? No?
Yeah, I I'm good. I'm just thinking. When I open my email on my computer. My account gives me a free option to download Office just because I have the account. I don't use it because I have my own office.
Well, that could probably be taken off of that because I think that's an added added thing. For each. Each account, every one of us have has our own account except for departments that have a department account. And certain people have Office and added things added to it. So you might not need that so it could lower your prescription your subscription rate.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, you know, because you can take mine out and have it.
Cause I don't need it either. I got it on my computer.
Yeah, I don't think. Yeah, like the three of us should have email only accounts.
I believe you do, yeah.
Yeah.
But if his is asking him to download.
I don't, yeah, I don't know.
I'll I'll look at it.
Yeah.
But I'm sure that we all have free access to Office with our accounts.
Yeah, if you could check in it, because we don't need it, we could save the town money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We get our own, so.
Or have someone else to use it.
Yeah.
But whatever you were, I I I agree with whatever. We were talking about your computer.
Yeah, he wants a new laptop, so.
So um money for cleaning the statue, we're just gonna wait on that?
Yeah.
I mean, it's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That could be like a spring project that we could address.
Yeah. Oh, the downstairs bathroom near the gym.
I need to do a little more investigation on that.
And then pointing of bricks, I think that was something that's.
That's gotta be something big.
Big, I I I'm gonna need some time to.
Project.
Yeah.
Plan for that.
That's probably gonna be a capital plan because then we also gotta look at roof repairs for here. Because this roof is getting aged.
Yeah.
So. You know, when you have old buildings.
Yeah.
And we all know, no money's been put into these buildings many years. So.
Didn't I ask a question? What if we do nothing?
Yeah, roof will fall in and we'll have no way to work. We'll be all working in trailers. So. It is what it is. Again, these these things could have been little little problems dealing with over years versus big ones.
So we're not voting on these now, right? Because this is still kind of a.
Uh, there, yeah, it's all very still fluid, you know, I mean, for you you've you voted on the concept for all of the ones that you you talked about.
Yeah.
Um, but I don't anticipate signing this until.
No, we won't do a final vote.
Okay.
Till, but we're we're good with all the ones except for the three that we pointed out.
Right.
Just on the agenda, it says anticipated vote, so.
Yeah, you you you, I mean, you voted on the the concepts of these.
We're agreeable.
Support.
Yeah.
To support them.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, we good? Moving on?
Moving on.
So number four, discussion of draft. Of a proposed policy regarding town employees attending special and annual town meetings, anticipated vote. Okay. So the this was brought up because of we've had boards using the secretaries. To present articles and paid during that time at special town meetings. Um, when the boards should be presenting the articles. Instead, they were having the employees for the town present the articles and fight for the motions. So. Um, this was something that. Again, um, if there's a board out there that's presenting stuff, the board should be taking participation. In in the in the meeting process and defending their articles. Although there are there are certain departments that cannot do this. Um, say like fire department and highway department, they're presenting their own articles. Um. Versus like planning board, where planning board should have a representative of the planning board. Presenting and defending the articles, not. A town employee doing it for them. So. Um, that's what this is basically about. And do we wanna read this out aloud? Because I'm losing my voice.
I don't know, do we need to? I mean, do we do?
Yeah, it should be.
Yep.
Does that mean me?
Yep, since you brought it up.
Yeah. Alright. Alright, whereas the town of Warren has an open meeting, open town meeting form of government. This form of government is the purest form of direct democracy. Town meeting is considered a legislative body. During the meeting, each voter is a legislature. At the meeting, voters will be asked to approve town budgets, capital expenditures, zoning changes, town bylaw changes. Compensation for employees and elected officials, town acquisition or dis- disposition of land and more. Open town meeting means that all Warren registered voters are eligible to participate and vote. Whereas the town annually holds its town meeting prior to the end of its fiscal year and will also typically schedule. Special town meetings in the fall and spring but could call a special town meeting at any time. Whereas the Board of Selectmen encourages all town residents to participate in all of its town meetings. Whereas it is the responsibility of elected and appointed officials, boards, committees, commissions and councils. To present and defend articles at town meetings that are being sponsored by their respective departments. Whereas the board, the personnel board feels that no municipal employee should be compensated. For attending any town meetings unless prior approval has been given to the personnel board. And that there are appropriate funds available to pay said municipal employee. Whereas compensating municipal employees to attend a town meeting could potentially be viewed as a violation to state ethics law. And now therefore be it ordered that the Board of Selectmen orders that no municipal employees. Shall be compensated for attending any town meetings unless prior approval has been given by the personnel board. Backed up with written justification from the requesting department. And that there are appropriate funds available from the department's budget to pay said municipal employee.
So the only problem I see where this is saying no municipal employee. Unless approval, that basically stops like Jeremy. From reading out his articles, same thing with fire department and police department because they're municipal employees.
He's elected though, Jeremy's elected.
He is, but Adam and Jerry are not. So they they would need to do it. I think.
Isn't the stipulation that they're compensated?
Yeah, we're salary employees. We're not hourly employees.
Who's getting paid to attend a town meeting?
We have that in the past.
Secretaries.
Yeah.
But. Administrative assistants.
It's not like.
Adam doesn't get compensated for attending the town meeting and advocating for his. Well, he just gets paid no matter what he does, right? I mean, he's a salary.
Salary employee.
I think he'd be okay.
Same with Jerry.
Yeah.
This is really meant to prevent boards saying, well, I don't wanna read my articles and they they send the secretary to go do it. And now that secretary is being paid to come and present an article for the board.
And they put in four hours.
And they put in for the time, yeah.
Yeah.
Which is not appropriate.
Yeah.
So. Um. Yeah, I I'm good with it. I'm good as long as, you know, we understand that we do have a couple departments that. They're their own department. You know, the fire department, the police department. They don't have anybody. They don't have a board. They don't have anything, so.
Okay.
I don't know if we wanna get Adam's input on this. So we need your input.
Oh, jeez, I'm sorry.
So Richie's gonna reread it again. Just kidding, um, so this this is a it's a policy preventing town employees from reading the articles. Um, presented at town meetings, um, while being paid, alright? One of the things that we have is you guys, you and Jerry are unique departments. Because you're fire department, police department. Um. Jeremy's a little different because he's elected official. So he falls under something different. Where you guys are not elected, you're an appointed officials. And this, this basically prevents. All paid, you guys are salary, so you're getting paid whether whether or not, you're not you're not being paid by the hour.
Right, so so my understanding of this, so I'm on the same page, is to do not have payroll submitted for hours. That people are submitting payroll for the town meeting, correct?
Correct.
Okay, um, so could it not be? Uh, I'm just trying to wrap my head around it, the best way to 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 write it. You know, could they be giving, could they be given uh other hours off so that there there's no compensation for that?
It it allows us in here to, um, with prior approval. To allow it. So all you gotta do is request it, if that's what you need to do, um, and request that time.
And just just you gotta justify, like, why do they need to be paid to attend? And then we would probably say, well, how much are you gonna pay them? You know, are they getting paid for the full meeting or for, you know, only the time they spend on that article maybe?
Yeah, I mean, I I was unaware that people were submitting payrolls for that to begin, to be honest, that's the first I've heard of it. I didn't realize that there were there were. Boards out there that were actually submitting payrolls, payroll slips for that afterwards. I didn't I didn't even know that was a thing, so. Yeah, like I said, I mean, unless they're given compensation time or something like that, I mean, that's the only other thing I can think of that might alleviate the.
Well, it should be the boards reading the articles.
Yeah.
The boards, departments or anything, but you and Jerry.
Yeah.
Your department.
Well, I mean.
You're 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 the you're the head of your department, so when you read your articles, you present your own articles.
We're not hourly employees, we're contracted employees, so it's not like we're we're submitting for hours on, I mean.
Right, so paragraph four of this is it is the responsibility of elected and appointed officials. Boards, committees, commissions and councils to present and defend articles at town meetings. That are being, that they are sponsoring, so that that is the justification that you can do that.
I think it's good.
Yeah, I like it.
Do you have any questions about it?
No, no, as long as it doesn't take the ability for us to do what we gotta do, well, I mean, that's 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 fine, yes. Well, I don't have any issues with it.
Do you have any questions, sir?
Nope.
Mr. Ferraro?
Nope.
So we're good with the substance and everything? We anything to change or anything? I'm good with it. As long as we all understand that, you know. We do have departments, but they're salaried employees, they're not paid by the hour.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to accept the policy titled municipal employees at town meetings policy.
Second.
All in favor?
Richie Hocker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufray, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Do you have a copy for us to sign?
Yep, it's on the table over there.
Alright, we'll do that later. Alright. Five, review and dis- review and discussion of a draft proposed policy regarding. Raising of flags on town property, anticipated vote.
Okay. Um, so. I would prefer that we discuss this before I read the whole thing, but this came out of, so Jim and I went to the MMA conference in January. The city of Boston was sued because, basically because they didn't have a policy in place. And they tried to restrict um someone from raising a flag. And then they got sued, and if they had had a policy.
It would have been good.
They would have been. They would have been okay. So the fallout is that if we have a policy that's clear, then we should be okay. My approach is, I personally believe that the town of Warren should be non-political in all respects. We're here, the three of us are here to serve everybody in the town, no matter what, you know, race, color, creed, gender, belief, whatever. So I think that the, the flags that are appropriate on our flag poles are basically US flags, state flags, town of Warren flags, those kind of things.
POW military flags.
Yeah, military flags, but nothing political that would express political opinions from any side.
I agree.
Religious, you know, any kind of, that's just not the town's business. If you, if you want to do it at home, it's great, but it's not what the town is about, so.
Do you have any questions about it?
Nope, I agree.
So do you want to read it into record now?
Okay, so I do have a question on C down there at the bottom. And possibly D. I kind of feel that those are open-ended enough that there's, there might be too much wiggle room. They're, they're a little vague.
So in honor of, to commemorate a particular holiday or special occasion and then in honor to, or, or to commemorate official actions or ceremonial, ceremonial events.
So who defines what a special occasion is?
Well, it, 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 it could be up to the board's discretion.
But again, yeah, that's when you get into, my opinion's different from his and his. And you can get into some crazy flags out there.
Yeah.
So this is not preventing somebody from putting up a banner for Fall Festival or things like that. But it is present, prohibiting somebody from going in here and raising a flag that's not consistent with town values in the hall. I think doing that is, I agree with you because you're leaving it open-ended.
Yeah, I mean, if we had a list of special occasions, okay, but I don't know how we could ever do that.
Can you think of any flags that would be special occasion flags?
The only other special flags around are the fire flags on the cemetery, those kinds of things.
But this is for town flag poles. So this is the flag pole here.
Are you talking specifically the town's flag poles?
Yes.
Are you talking just generally around, okay.
Town owned.
Town owned property. So if there's a flag, there's one at the fire stations, there's one here.
One at the senior center.
If you guys have one, the one at the senior center. So those are all town-owned flag poles.
So I, I would just simply say that on the, the town, on the, the town's fire stations, we do have a Fire Department flag that flies under the US flag. So I would, I would say that would be the only, we've always flown a Fire Department flag underneath there, so. I mean, I suppose that would have to be added to the list if they wanted to continue to do that unless they wanted to fly a, you know, a Commonwealth flag. Like is done under some of the others.
Well, it says flags representing individual town departments.
Yeah, Bar Quabob Regional. So that would be okay.
Yeah, okay.
So I would propose to strike C and D.
Okay.
If that's amenable to you guys.
I will have council review that.
Okay, so we gotta go another round?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Any, anything else?
No, I'm, I'm good with it and I'm, I agree with it. The world we're in today. There's some crazy stuff being presented in towns and and we're here to present the town's image, you know, if you want to do the municipal flag and the US flag. Yeah.
So to answer Richie's question, you know, what would be ceremonial flags, say? Say there was a, you know, a breast cancer awareness, you know, month was going on in the town wanted to fly, you know, a cancer awareness flag, you know, that could be considered a ceremonial flag. A special event or a, a special occasion or actions, you know, could be, you know, if, if, for example, I, I remember when we were involved in the Persian Gulf War and they, they had special flags that were, you know, when the countries had wartime, special occasions during that period of time. You know, towns or cities would fly special occasion flags to support troops or different things like that. So those are just some examples of.
I think those are more banners though.
Okay.
They're not, you're not putting them on the flagpole, you're not flying under the US flag or on a flagpole. Yeah, it's not something, you know, you do. You, you might have some banners or something that you put those things up.
So there was two ways to approach this, either do a policy or a bylaw. So the policy is a lot more flexible. So I would prefer to get rid of C and D. And then in the future, if the Select Board says, hey, we really think this is important, they can change the policy and go through that process.
To include.
Yeah, and they can figure out. If we had, we could have done a bylaw, but it's, it's a lot harder to change. So I think the first cut of this as a policy is the way to go. And maybe it can be a bylaw, maybe five years down the line or something, but I think the first go around is a better approach.
It just, it's too vague to have.
Yeah.
Those there. Let's stick with the basics.
Okay.
Yeah.
You good with that?
Yes, yes, yes. Just one more flags in town, US flags.
Yes, yes, yes. Alright. Cool. Did you have any questions on that, Jim?
It doesn't cover anything with the half staff, right?
No, that's, that goes in the, it depends on what the state has declared and that's done by the governor. If she declares raising half staff or whatever, that's different. This is identifying specific flags of interest groups that would like to have their flag raised in the town. This would stop that because we'd have a policy preventing that. And it would be just the American flag, the state flag and military flags. So POW and I A flag.
So eventually I'll read this, but the end of it just says that you follow federal and Massachusetts laws for everything else. How to display them, half-mast rules. Cause there's actually rules around when you do it, how long you do it, et cetera, so.
Yeah, they come out through the state by email and stuff.
Yeah, so all that's, you know, it's kind of got the catch-all at the end that it just falls under the laws.
So you don't want to read it to tonight?
No, I want to read the final version.
The final version?
Yeah.
Alright, so we're gonna table it with the changes, make the changes and we'll do it next week.
Okay.
Alright? Alright. Okay, alright, next thing on the agenda, Fire Department Monthly, Monthly Report. Chief, you're up.
Evening everyone, I'm Boyfire Chief. Thank you for having me here this evening. Apologize I couldn't be here the last two meetings, I believe. So for my September, a Fire Department report, we responded to thirty-four fire incidents in September of two thousand twenty-three. She included eight motor vehicle accidents, seven medical assists, one structure fire, eight activated alarms, one carbon monoxide investigation, one general investigation, a couple of power line incidents, one illegal burn, we were canceled twice on false calls, one mutual aid call to another community and two service calls. Responded to sixty-one calls on the EMS side of things and fourteen ALS intercepts were required. We did a few inspections, which included forced smoke and CO inspections, four liquid propane tank inspections, three oil burner inspections. And in terms of training, we did a walkthrough at the rights complex, reviewed some of the situational stuff down there, went over the pump, pump room and kind of give a walkthrough to anybody that had any questions on, on anything that's down there. Warren EMS trained on safe stretcher operations and pediatric restraint equipment procedures. These are two huge topics that they require us to review at least once a year through all EMS standards. Because quite honestly, most of, a lot of incidents that patients are injured are due to, or, or EMS personnel injured are due to lifting and carrying moving stretchers way too high and tipping over, those kind of things. So we make sure that our staff is well-trained and understand the safest way to transport patients, especially pediatric patients that require some additional equipment that they can't fit on a regular stretcher. You know, we have certain restraint devices that we have to use for certain weights and sizes. So we made sure that they were, we, we reviewed that equipment with them. We talked about it tonight, a request in an article to be considered to add monies to the Advanced Life Support Line, which is being supported by finance and the board to go forward for the November meeting to, to make, to alleviate that, that shortage that we, we saw coming. We did do some miscellaneous other inspections. You know, I've been working with Jim, still straightening some things out with the school. I just recently got into the town buildings to do some inspections. So I've been kind of busy on, on that front. But that kind of summed up September.
Very good. Any questions?
Yeah, the rights complex, is that something you do every year? Like, what was the deal with that?
We try to get in there in terms of getting the fire personnel walking through there, just so they're kind of familiar with the buildings. It's hard to remember that stuff and what numbers the buildings are. I mean, and for anyone that hasn't been in there, you know, it's easy to get turned around in there real quick. There, that's a huge complex. We just want them to understand the general layout of it. We want them to make sure that they understand how the sprinkler system works, how the jockey pump works, what kicks on when, you know, something goes down and, and, you know, how the basic operation is, you know, just so they have a, you know, an idea. You know, like I said, they're wide open buildings. It's very easy to get disoriented and not know where you are and, 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 you know, we don't want to see that happen. So we try to get down there at least once a year so that they, they know that, you know, the general layout.
Okay.
Any other question?
No.
And those are, thank you very much.
Thank you. AEDs for the buildings, they are still good?
Yep, so AEDs are all done. I still have, I think I gotta get in to see Jeremy's crew in there to do a quick lesson with them. I mean, it's not rocket science when it comes to that stuff. While I was doing the inspection down at the Sewer Department, I did speak with the staff down there, did a review down there, so. You know, senior center, I'm gonna do another one this year. I have done an AED review with them. But all of the town buildings were upgraded with the same style that we have on the Fire Department. So everything is, everything's the same. All the pads are the same, so hopefully we never have an incident, but, you know, it's always better to have them. You know, it's something you wanna, you know, you don't think about, but you know, the seconds count. I mean, you know, as, as the board knows, my mother is a heart attack survivor. So, you know, she was a cardiac arrest survivor and the only reason she's still here with us today is because a couple of police officers happened to be able to shock her in time to bring her back. So these things, they, you know, these, they work when trained professional rescuers are, are there and, and someone can immediately get CPR going and can get these, you know, AEDs functioning and, you know, the person has the best percentage chance of surviving an incident if those things are in place. So I think it's very important to have them here at the town buildings and I, I, you know, I, I, you know, say thank you to the board for, for seeing that ARPA project through because I think it's important that all of our people are protected as much as possible in all of our buildings.
Batteries, we're not up for batteries for two years?
Yeah, probably, everything's about two years. So you're looking at pad replacement and batteries probably about two years. So we'll kind of keep an eye on that, but these are, these are newer units, so I don't see that happening anytime soon. But, you know, the different departments will have to budget for that at some point. I mean, it's not super expensive stuff, but it's, you know, a couple hundred dollars for pads and a a couple hundred, you know, a hundred bucks or a couple hundred bucks for batteries. But that's only happens every like two years. So it's just something to keep on your radars, but, you know, I, I, I think it's important, like I said, I mean, I, I'm a firsthand, you know, my, you know, my mom's a survivor because of that. So, I mean, I can say firsthand how important that is. And she, there's no way she would have survived if, if that wasn't in place and someone didn't have an AED right, right near her and it got to her within about a minute and a half, so. It does work.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
And thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Emergency Management Report. Jimmy, you're up.
Jimmy Keen, Emergency Management Director. I've come here with September's, on for the trip. The second of September, we assisted Charlton Sirt with a few members with their fireworks. The third was our siren test. Seventh, myself and Jim, we attended MEMA meeting in Agawam. It was kind of like a town hall style, kind of what MEMA can help out, do better for towns. One of the biggest issues that we came across there was immigration right now that's going on. Expecting a lot of different towns in different ways. So that was a hot topic at that meeting. Then the fifteenth, we attended, I attended a training on manual and uniform traffic control devices that was put on by MEMA. It was mainly put on about, put on your railroad association. All different signs pertaining to railroad crossing and stuff was mainly covered. It was about four hour course. That was a true very. Then the next day, that weekend, we had the threat of tropical storm Lee coming up. But it luckily steered away, a couple hundred miles off the coast and didn't give us anything, so. But everything was activated through the state and everywhere. Everyone was monitoring. September twenty-eighth, we had our monthly Sirt meeting. I was first aid taught by Dan Taville. Three members attended. It was one of our lower attendance meetings. We usually get six to eight people, but sometimes it's hard to get gathered volunteers to. September twenty-ninth, that's where we received about four, over four and a half inches of rain in twenty-four hours. It rained just slow enough not to cause any serious flooding issues. It was just minor street flooding issues at times. The worst was along our state highway, Morav, down right by the West Warren Lights and by Spencer's Garage. At times, there was quite a bit of water in the roadway, put some cones and stuff out. Also earlier in the day, there was a tree on Red, on Red Hill Road. Stayed for about two hours or so. Then the power crew's cleaning that up. And attached is a log of our, by EOC. Based on what I went over.
Thank you very much. Do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Good job, Jim. Thank you very much. Number eight, review of a request from the Highway Department to use American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds to purchase a slip mount truck loader for four thousand eighty dollars anticipated. So what's going on here? I thought there was an article for this.
We need it now. The leaves are falling today.
It's fall, they fall all the time.
Yeah, but I can't wait to, I can't wait till the middle of November to get this. This has to be like yesterday. We have piles of leaves everywhere over town and our, our, the one we had that was old and purchased used, the motor exploded.
Just blow them into the neighbor's yard, Sal.
Yeah, well, they, they tend to blow them into our yard more often than that, so.
I'm kidding with that, by the way. Mr. Farrar gave me the look like.
I'll be getting a ton of calls.
I was blowing leaves into my yard. Alright, what are your thoughts?
I will trust Jeremy that if he says he needs it, he needs it. But man, I hate, I hate to see this.
I know, I know.
This is so painful.
It's been, we've been doing it manually so far, by hand, picking up leaves and loading them into trucks. And it is a very slow and painful process.
What if the three of us get out there?
Yeah, now he's just been making piles anticipating that the leaf vacuum will come hopefully, so.
I do also want to comment on this. I, I want to commend Jimmy and, was it Barry?
Barry.
Barry. They came down to senior center this week, cleaned up the entire
Yep.
thing around the senior center. When we had, you know, we have construction going on down there. Really looks presentable. It's, it's really unbelievable. They really did a nice job. So thank you both for, for that.
Good job. So do we give them the money or not?
To Jeremy and to buy this? Of course.
Well, Derek says yes.
Yes, Derek.
No, 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 no.
Is it enough? Is it enough, Jeremy?
Just make sure.
So how much is this gonna leave us?
Approximately, you still have a little over four thousand dollars left.
So we can buy two.
Stop, stop. We're gonna spend this down to one dollar. And we're gonna take that dollar and frame it.
Frame it. We want, one ARPA dollar.
Yeah, one ARPA dollar left.
We're lucky there's one available right now. I asked the guy to please pull aside and don't sell it on us because they're very hard to come by right now. Because it's tis the season. Yeah. And there's, there's not quite the shortage on equipment that there was, but there's not a lot of them available, so.
Okay. Yeah, I, I guess Jeremy's saying he needs it. He never comes in here and asks for anything. And it's not like it's four hundred thousand dollars.
So we got twenty percent off?
Yeah, government sales, so. They have to buy by, uh,
Off the state contract.
The state contract.
Okay, cool. All right, I'll make a motion to allocate four thousand eighty dollars from ARPA to the highway department to purchase a skid mount truck loader.
Second. All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You have your leaf machine.
Have fun.
He's like, thanks. He's like, thanks. Yeah, but now they're gonna be all heavy from all the rain that was supposed to be getting.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
Hopefully, that's, that's what we deal with.
All right. So number nine, discussion of eliminating the performance bond requirement of the Wrights Mill Master Recovery Plan request for proposals for professional planning services. So this is our plan and all it is, is a, there's no actual work.
No, this is for a, a study. So this is a, a study for master planning services. I've been getting a lot of feedback from different engineering firms that are asking, you know, these are not customary to have performance bonds. But I said, well, our bylaw says that, you know, you know, for contracts over four thousand, that, you know, a board could waive the performance bond requirement. I think it's justifiable in this to, to, to do it because it's not a, it's just a study. It's just a, a planning study. And, you know, I think that would spur maybe some more responses and actual submissions to, to the RFP.
Okay. What's your thoughts?
Yeah, um, let's waive it.
Yeah, let's waive it.
In fact, let's, um, the bylaw, let's put that, we should look at the bylaw next. We don't need to do it now for.
We can do it at the annual.
At the annual. Let's fix it. Make it more clear, maybe raise the limit a little bit since prices have gone up, you know.
Sure.
All right, do a motion.
Make a motion to eliminate the performance bond requirement for the Wrights Mill Master Recovery Plan request for proposals.
Second. All in favor? Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The ma, um, the motion has passed. Okay, warrants and bills. Okay. And they're over there.
I don't know, I have this thing.
Yes.
So I'm just reading this?
Yep.
All right.
Was this a new form?
Well, it was just, just something that was created on the fly.
Okay, so.
By you?
Uh, no, by the town accountant.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to pay the following bills, right? These are all bills?
Yeah.
Massachusetts Municipal Human Resources for two hundred twenty-five dollars. Modern Pest for eighteen hundred eighty-four dollars. Three sixty building and remodeling, two thousand dollars.
Hold on. Spell purchase wrong. And Shepherd Purchase Service.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. I didn't read that, so.
So you second it? All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
We should probably have spell checked for some of these departments.
Yeah.
It's included in the office software.
I think you have to pay extra.
They should use it. All right. We had no, no warrants?
I don't have the, the totals for that.
Okay.
They were approved by Ford.
Yeah, okay. So minutes, possible vote to accept the minutes and.
We don't have it.
So how come we don't have minutes, though?
We did. She sent them to us.
I know.
But she was out sick today, so it didn't get entered.
Okay.
So, we'll table it until next week. All right, and town administrator report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have a couple of things I'd like to report to the board this week. This past Saturday, we had a very successful open meeting law training. Here at the Shepherd Building, we had eleven people attended from various boards. You know, Mr. Conrad was here, Ray was here. And, you know, it was, I thought it was well, well attended. I thought that people asked some great questions. We, we, we came, we came up with some, some great topics that were discussed about executive sessions, about agendas, the importance of minutes, keeping minutes in a central location, making sure that minutes get approved and released. Making sure that boards understand the importance of agendas being clear so that the average person walking by our posting board can understand what will be discussed at the meeting. And, you know, I think it was, it was an eye opener for, for, for some individuals that may not have necessarily known the extent to a lot of the laws that are governed by the Attorney General's Office around open meeting law. So I thought it was very well, and I thought it went very good for those who attended. And I think everybody was appreciative of, of having it on a Saturday because a lot of people are busy during the week or working. And we, we did, we did offer that. Our next step is to offer a, a training for employees in town, in, in the building that they can come during the work week, that we can, you know, train on the open meeting law as well and have people participate in that. I think it will be beneficial to some of the, especially some of the clerical staff that is involved with posting of meetings. So we're gonna be doing that, hopefully maybe, you know, before the first of the year to get that, that set up and, and done. As Chief Lavoy had mentioned, I had asked Chief Lavoy to go through all of the municipal town owned buildings this summer to look at potential fire hazards, to look at making sure that there's no significant clutter around in ways in which we can improve on some of the clutter that we do have. You know, town halls have, in, in municipal buildings have the, you know, the magnetic effect of just collecting stuff over years and nobody ever gets rid of anything. And so we're, we're running out of, simply running out of room. So it's important that departments go through this annually and, and look to see if, 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 if pieces of equipment are broken, if files can be purged to the archive room, if there's trash or clutter that can be, get rid of in offices, that we do that. And Chief Lavoy did a very nice job with going through each of our buildings. He went through the wastewater treatment plant, the council on aging, our senior center, the highway department, the police department, Shepherd Building and identified areas. I had sent an email out this week to every department, letting them know what the chief had, has, has found. And to ask that each department had to follow up on those areas that need to be addressed with an email back just letting me know that they, yes, they've been taken care of, they know that we're working on it, or we have a corrective action planned for this. So we're just taking a little bit of a proactive approach to some of the stuff that, you know, could be potential hazards, fire hazards going on in the, in, in the buildings. And this will be very helpful for when we have, on October thirtieth, Maya's coming in to do our, our annual review. And so this is, these are some things that I can tell Maya that we've done on some of our liability issues, being a little bit more proactive. The chief goes out there, issues a report, department heads get a copy of the report and, and, and corrective orders that need to be taken within their departments. So it's, it's very helpful and I, I think it's gonna be helpful to the town with its insurance provider. As I indicated before in tonight's meeting, we do have a, a contractor out at the senior center. He has been doing his work. It's continuing on with the, with the improvement, the exterior improvement of the building. It's, it's, it's been working very nicely. It's coming along. I've stopped there several times this week to, on my way in in the morning, to check on the progress and, and to see where we are. We, we anticipate to be wrapped up just around the time that, of that November tenth date to wrap up the entire project. It's really gonna be a really transformative exterior of the building. And I think people are gonna be pleased with it. There was already discussions about, you know, you know, can, can I, can I put a, you know, a nail? I want to hang a, hang a wreath. Not, we can't, we can't put any holes in the new vinyl siding, unfortunately.
No.
So I, I, I have already kind of laid that out there to, to the senior center and told them about it this morning. So that was clearly informed to them. And I, as we went around the building, there was significant a number of little tacks, little nails that were put in where wreaths were hung, lights were hung. That has to stop. Especially, you know, now that we've put siding up, we've put insulation behind the siding. It would defeat the whole purpose of what we're trying to do here. So I made that very clear to the seniors, but, you know, there's ways in which we can, you know, decorate some trees or, or decorate some bushes or something, or get some freestanding stuff, you know, that's fine.
There's little plastic clips that just snap onto things that you can use
Yeah.
for that particular stuff. But yeah, you shouldn't be drilling into stuff.
I use them all the time.
Uh huh.
They're metal, too.
Yeah.
Right, right. So it's been going very well, as, as the chairman had indicated. You know, our back was taken care of this past weekend. As you can see that there's a, there's, we thought was just a couple, you know, planters or, or patio bricks, pavers there. There was a whole line of them. It, it was so bad that it was all overgrown and, and algae was over it, and weeds, and dirt. It just overgrown the pavers, so now all of the pavers are exposed. So they've, they've been totally cleaned off. The algae is off the, the building. The algae is off of the, the parking lot area. It's off of the roof. It's been totally treated and, and been taken care of. So, you know, when we have future events like the, the haunted house that's coming up and other events coming up, voting, employees going in and out of the building, you know, it's a little bit less slick out there. It's no slick. And it's, it's taken care of. The outside of the doors were all power washed. All the exterior doors were power washed too, so those were all cleared up. I'm hoping that with the support of town meeting and getting some additional funds for this building, we can take care of the lighting here. I'm currently in the process of getting quotes from electricians on the lighting here, so that's gonna be addressed relatively very quickly once we, the funds are made available. This week, I was able to secure a masonry to start the work down at the wastewater treatment plant for those corroded steps. The sewer commissioners have asked me to get involved in that. I've, I've gotten involved. I, I did some background on the, on the company, made sure the insurances were, were checked out. We just got the insurances back today. They meet the standards of municipal work. The, the gentleman, the company that's doing it is paying prevailing wage. So we have all of that, all of our bases covered. And he's hoped to, to get to us within the next two weeks, which is important to do before it gets, you know, before the season really starts to turn on us. So those steps will be, will be addressed. This, this week, and Ray can attest to this, you know, we, we met with FinCom. We were here Tuesday night. We went through all of the articles, mostly supportive of FinCom supports, so mostly all of them. They were very pleased with the town investing. The first two articles is putting it right into our savings account. It's the most important thing. Before you go spend anything, we're putting money into the savings account. And if you take all of these articles, you're still going to have approximately four hundred and ninety thousand dollars, okay? That will be carried over until the annual town meeting, okay? So we're not spending it. We're holding the line on free cash. We're still having free cash available in case there's a catastrophic event between now and, in town meeting. Catastrophic event, well, why do you need all this free cash? It's a lot cheaper than borrowing right now. Okay? Borrowing is very expensive. With interest rates going up and borrowing and closing costs, it's a lot of money. It's always best if you can have cash and you can pay cash. So it's a, it's a, it's a great testament to what we've done here so the last year and a half with trying to cut back and, and trying to save and, and making sure that we have funds available at any time for, for an event. And we're planning for the future as well.
Very good. Anything else, sir?
No, sir.
Okay. We might want to put out there that, so one of the reasons all this concrete is getting eaten up is during the winter season, people are spreading the wrong substances on this. Calcium chloride eats the concrete. It definitely eats up the salt, well, eats up the, the ice, but it, it destroys concrete. If they're gonna put something on, it has to be straight salt or sand.
Sand, yeah.
None of that calcium chloride because it dissolves concrete. So we should probably put something out
We'll put that out.
to our departments not to use that. I made a mistake of using it on a little walkway in my house. And it, walkway was beautiful the year before and I threw that on it, it dissolved the concrete.
Wow.
Yeah, it's nasty. So, and I think that's probably why we're having so many concrete problems. Because I know at the school, they just fixed a whole bunch of their concrete too for their, and it's all the same areas. These steps and these walkways where people, the ice gets on it, so. And then also, any chance we can have a fire lane painted out back behind the building?
Fire lane, yeah.
If we can get that done. And we're gonna have, we want to have those two handicap spots. The sign's taken off the building, have them put in two spots across where the other one is. But we're just gonna have the two spots. But we were looking at the, the spots, the one where there was gonna be a handicap spot, it's actually too small. And it's over a drain, so we have to. And it's over a drain, so we have to move it to the next two spots. So we're gonna have that one spot, that's a small spot, that's just an odd spot, and I was thinking as we're talking.
Motorcycle?
Motorcycle parking. We can have a motorcycle parking there.
Yeah.
Or scooter or?
Yeah, scooter, because it's too small for a conventional vehicle. So, and you know somebody's gonna try to jam their
You can
four by four truck in there, you know?
Have you seen compact cars signs too?
Yeah.
It's just too small, it's not even nine by eight by sixteen, it's smaller than that.
Yeah. Well, is there any way you could help us out with that soon?
We'll figure something out, we'll see what the weather lets us do, because it can't paint when it's wet and cold.
Right.
He can, well, he can take care of the leaves for
The leaves are gonna be good though.
We will take care of the leaves.
Yeah, I just did, before we have a voting or anything like that.
Mm-hmm.
I wanna make sure that nobody's parking there, um, because again, Adam needs to be able to get in there with an ambulance, so. Yeah, that's about it. Did you have anything?
No, I don't.
For him? No.
Hey, okay, thank you very much, Mr. Farrar.
Thank you.
All right, new business, anybody have any new business?
I do not.
No?
Nothing, sir.
No? Um, old business? No business.
Nothing.
Old business?
Um, no.
No? Okay, correspondence?
Um, Joe had his.
Yeah, we'll get to him.
Okay, all right.
Correspondence?
No correspondence.
No?
Well, what's what's this letter, is this correspondence?
Yes, that is a correspondent, from Mr. Plotkin from A One, uh, Atlantic Furniture, from the rights on the, um, on the levee.
On number fifteen, okay. Um, we're in receipt of the letter and will take necessary steps to correct the issue. I would just ask that you allow us additional time to complete the work as it, it will be extremely difficult to have the work completed by, uh, October twenty-sixth. So when is he looking?
I just got it to, you know, yesterday, I believe, yeah.
What's what's additional time, another week? Two weeks?
Well, so what do they got, they have to rip up the asphalt?
Asphalt, yeah.
And put, um, soil down.
Yeah, they have to build the berm back up and then seed it.
Yeah.
So, and they should probably get on that before everything freezes over.
Next week's a good week, I think, actually, it's gonna be a little warmer.
Yeah.
He's, he also indicated that he was gonna be there, um, you know.
That's fine.
Hopefully that, you know, we can talk to him at that.
Oh, at the twenty, on the twenty-sixth?
On the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
I I would ask him how much additional time.
Okay.
Um, because if he's saying, well, I'd like to do it in spring now.
All right.
No, actually, this is the time to do it, so where the grass grows.
I would like to see some work at least started.
Right.
Right, when, at the beginning.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not gonna be done, but it, they're working on it, but if there's nothing done and he's asking for more time.
Maybe if he digged up half of it, you know?
Well, once you dig up the asphalt, you're gonna, you're gonna have to do the whole thing.
Yeah.
They're gonna have to cut it to get that line and then dig up that section.
Show some progress, you know?
Yeah, that's the word I was looking for, progress.
But it shouldn't have been taken out in the first place. All right. Uh, yeah, if you ask him how much?
Okay.
How much more time do you need? You know, I I think a couple of weeks is fine, but if he's asking for, well, I I can get it done in the spring.
Okay.
Um, was that it for correspondence for?
That's all I received, yeah.
Anybody else? Um, no, Joe's comments and concerns, so. All right, hold on one second, do you have any comments and concerns?
I do not.
Do you have any comments and concerns?
Yes, and it's in, in a way of improving things in town. Just to put it on the, uh, back burner. The other day I was driving on Main Street at night and there was somebody trying to cross the, uh, crossway on Main Street, and it was very dark, very dark to see. I was, you know, kind of concerned of that spot. Um, so maybe we can't paint the, uh, the bridge because it will get expensive because of the, uh, uh, lead, maybe we can look at putting some lights there for people to cross at night, it's getting kind of busy over there.
Yeah, we have to look at it. I know we're talking about doing some lighting, because one of the things we'd like to do is Christmas, decorate the bridge, you know, just at least little clips, nothing to affix or permanently affix anything to it, and have lighting there, um, and going underneath the bridge, because it's very dark under there.
Yeah, yeah, and and the change of time, sometimes the kids going or going to school or going back home, it it may get dark.
Yeah, we'll have to look into that.
Besides that, no more concerns.
Okay. Mr. Conrad?
Okay.
Comments and concerns, sir?
Railroad ties.
Yep.
Now, I think it was about ten thirty this morning, I seen a pickup truck on the West Horn site loading railroad ties. I'm pretty sure that repeatedly we've told people not to take them.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I did not have a good angle to see the plate number of the truck, because he was parked in and his tailgate was down. But, you know, repeatedly, in the, in the last six months, we've told people, don't take the railroad ties, you don't own them.
Right.
Ten thirty this morning, there's a pickup truck loading railroad ties.
Yeah, it's not our property, it's the railroad's property, and, um, I believe it will fall under a federal offense because they are governed under, uh, federal laws because they're interstate tra- travel. Um, and I would definitely not touch any of their property that belongs to the train, um, company. And anything to do with those tracks, stay off them, stay away from them, and leave the railroad ties alone. Um, because it's not your property, and you also don't wanna be bringing that stuff to your own home, because there's a lot of chemicals in those railroad ties that you don't wanna be leaching into your own, your own, um, gardens. I I would not use those for gardens.
Creosote tomatoes are my favorite.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, yeah, stay away from them. And I would say, Joe, if you see that again, notify the police and let them handle it, because they would notify the transit police, and the transit police would definitely have a issue with that, so.
So Jim, do you think it's worth getting in touch with CSX and just saying?
I can let them know.
People are taking their ties.
People are taking the ties. It's a third company that that they contracted out to to come pick them up from what Maurice O'Connell had indicated to me, so, uh, maybe just a, you know, a shove of CSX to to get that third company, hey, listen, go pick up your ties is 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 in order.
Just let them know. Get them out of here, because people are stealing them and last thing we want is somebody going up there. It's not our property, it's not our responsibility to 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 police their their train tracks.
Yeah, right.
It's their property, they have a special police department for that property. We can't be going up there, so they need to be taking care of that themselves, so. Um, anybody else have any comments and concerns? Jimmy?
One more thing, uh, this week I was, uh, putting up the Maple Street sign there, at the bottom of the hill. I happened to look up in the warrant, um, on the sign, actually, the letters are ready to peel right off. Uh, should probably look into, uh, some kind, at least fixing the, that part of the sign.
I think Highway has a budget for that, right, for signs?
Hmm, that's, that's not a very big budget, and I've been buying street signs like crazy lately, so.
Well, ask for more money.
Oh, all right, no problem. You stand up in front of the town and ask for more money.
I do!
I know, I know, but I have
Believe me, I know.
This is more possible than having a graphics person come out and go and see if they could dress something up for us, maybe?
Yeah, I don't think there's a seal on it, they usually put a clear coat over, a sealer that goes over all the vinyl letters. I don't think that sign ever had it on it.
Which sign is it?
Right at the bottom on Maple Street.
Right across from Warren Roofers there, that little, little, uh, part.
More of a decorative sign, yeah.
Is that the Queen of the Quay Bog one, right?
Among the hills, among the hills.
That side of the sign is okay, it's just the town letter.
Okay. Isn't that Chamber of Commerce, isn't that the sign?
No, this is a different sign. It's on Town on the land.
Right when you make that Our little park, yeah.
Sounds like a highway department issue.
I'll just get the paintbrush on, we'll get paint on.
Don't you work for Highway Department? Fix the sign! All right, anything else, Jimmy?
Uh, and the other, uh, one other thing is, uh, we've been working on that Halloween, uh, trick or treat map. Uh, we've got about just under seventy people, I think, that signed up for it. Uh, we've been promoting it, it's on Facebook, on Town Alert today to get on the link, it's a Google map. Just say if you're handing out candy, your address will pop up on it, so people will know that.
I have to say, it looks good, and for those critics of it that say, we don't need a map, and why don't you just turn the front light on? Look, come on now, how many miles of road do we have? And just because somebody puts their thing out there saying we're gonna be giving candy, doesn't mean every kid has to go to that house because it's it's off the beating path or anything like that, it's letting people know that they're giving candy, they wanna participate. Technology.
People were seriously criticizing?
People are trashing it.
Oh, for God's sake.
Bad on Facebook, and I'm like, are you kidding me? Trying to do something nice for the town, and people are, what happened to this traditional just turning a light on? Because some people turn their light on for safety and they don't, they don't have candy, they just turn their light on. This is allowing people to participate.
Automatic lights that come on, people just walking in and the light will come on here.
If you don't have something nice to say, keep it to yourself.
Very safe, uh,
Seriously.
solution.
You know?
Something we're trying.
Root people out there. I'm sure you've been seeing all the comments.
Oh, yeah, but it's okay, I like, I like the map, because it actually kinda like makes you feel like, oh, yeah, I've been there, I know, oh, this is a good place, oh, look at here, we can go over here too, so.
No, it's good, it's a good map, it's a good idea, and it's trying something different for the town.
Mm-hmm, you can actually open it up and ask for
You don't like it, don't use it.
Mm-hmm.
There you go.
Keep it open till, I think, the thirtieth of, uh, October.
Yeah.
Sign up to it.
Yeah, we're gonna, you're gonna keep it open, and if you don't like it, keep scrolling.
Yeah, don't do it if you don't like it.
Find something else.
Don't trash people that do do it. Whatever, anyway, uh, anything else, Jimmy?
That's all I got.
Jerry?
All right, I'll finish on a very high note, uh, I scored a really, really big purchase for the town last week. Using my, uh, surplus and auction money, I bought a bucket truck, a twenty-eight foot utility truck from the town of Carver. Uh, they got a brand new one, and theirs was in garage stored its entire life in an excellent condition, and I s- pretty much stole it, so.
What do you mean a bucket truck?
I got a twenty-eight foot utility bucket truck.
Like a tree, like a tree lift?
Yes.
Tree service?
Small one, but it'll be very helpful for canopy raising for us, lifting the low branches. We have endless miles of road that need the canopy lifted, and we don't have nearly enough money just to cut the dead trees, never mind raising canopy. And then, uh, obviously, Jim's excited, because we can de- do a little more decorating and get to highways. So, yeah, I, uh, I had it brought to the Highway Department this week, and, uh, it's inside, our mechanic's gonna go through the entire thing, and we're getting all new harnesses and everything, and I have a, a company coming in to go through a training with a couple of guys to train them how to properly use it, properly prune trees, and not get in a dangerous situation.
Stay away from the power lines.
Yeah, so that's very, they all have wasting licenses and already know the rules and regulations as far as that goes. Um, so, again, just, uh, somebody else, they have, they're getting rid of it, and I just happened to stumble upon it and and scored, so, another great addition to our, uh, our Highway Department equipment, so, everybody's really excited about it, so.
Hey, that that means that we only need to buy the, uh, US flags now, because you're gonna be able to
Yeah, hopefully.
Main Street.
And drive right down with somebody in the truck, boop, 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 boop?
I was just gonna say, how many times I've had to pull strings with, you know, National Grid or Verizon as they see their trucks goodbye, and I ask a favor to have a friend go up and fix our flag or out here or anything, that honestly, that's, that's, that's great.
I've been looking for, for a few years, and I finally came across one that was in extremely good condition. And, uh, like I said, I, you know, I, I, we paid fifty-nine hundred dollars for it, so.
Wow.
And there, you can't get near one for less than twenty-five, thirty grand.
Yeah.
So it just so happened to come from a, another town, and I happened to get in on the inside and got it, so. Again, a bonus, good bonus, so.
Good job, good job.
Make sure you write this, all these little good things down, because they, they may help you down the road.
Oh, okay.
I don't know, his reputation's helping him pretty good right now, so.
I'll do it, all right.
He's doing, doing well, awesome job. Um, all right, anybody else have any comments and concerns?
I just got one quick thing, uh, just wanted to let the board know that, uh, effective today, we were in receipt of about a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars worth of, um, FEMA grants for the, the truck, the, the brush truck that we've been replacing for the last two and a half years. So that money was requested, I requested at the end of last week, uh, it did come in today, and Doc confirmed that, so uh, that truck was, uh, basically half paid for by a grant that we received from that. So we expect to see that truck, that's the replacement of the, the small mini yellow truck you've seen at the station that's now been moved to the high school, uh, for the, for the class up there. But we're expecting to see that, the truck is done, uh, we expect to see that within the next week to two weeks. But that money came in today, so that's a great thing for us to be able to pay that invoice off completely for that, so I'll be doing that next week, so. It's a really, really good thing.
I, I just made me rethink something, uh.
What do you got?
We, uh, we finally, I've been waiting very, very, very patiently for months for our reimbursement for our last two Chapter Ninety projects, we received it today, five hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, so. It was nice to get the money back.
Very good, wow. Now we got some, some standards to hold Jerry too, when he comes back from vacation. They're like, what grants did you get? Take your birthday off and you didn't even get any grants during your birthday?
I'm sure he's working on vacation on that, right?
He should be.
Yeah.
All right, well, awesome job, guys, thank you very much, you guys are doing terrific work, and, you know, you know we're always here anytime you need anything, and, um, yeah, I'm sure Ray's happy to hear all that money coming in and helping out, so. But, um, yeah, I think the town doesn't pay attention to where a lot of this stuff comes from and all the hard work behind it and submitting for these grants, and, you know, some of them are pretty competitive and going after them, and we've been really competitive in our town in the past few years to get in these grants, and it's paying off. You know, we're having a lot, lot to show for it now, we have a lot of nice equipment, stuff that we never had, ever. And we're replacing all our fire equipment, police vehicles, this town's getting into a pretty good position for the future, so, good job, everybody, very impressed. And Jimmy, I wanna see you in that bucket truck soon.
He won't even climb up into the back of it.
All right, um, so anybody else have any comments and concerns, anybody on Zoom?
Zoom.
Sure.
You gotta unmute yourself.
Is that Joe?
Yeah.
Yeah, hi.
Hey, how's it going, Joe?
How are you guys?
Good, and you? What's up, what do you got for us?
Um, so I was listening earlier, and you were talking about, uh, the extra vehicle for travel to identify town employees.
Yep.
It's a good idea, but the insurance, like you said, would be really expensive, what do you think about a magnet on that vehicle? If you announce it at the meeting, they'll know, like, on your own personal vehicle? So you put a magnet on, town assessor, or to help when she does her, but, or?
Paying those miles, so why not?
You still have to pay for the mileage, but it's gonna knock down the insurance cost of a town vehicle, you don't have to sign out the vehicle, or? That was just a thought.
It would probably help a little bit too, because one of the pro- It would probably help a little bit too, because one of the problems that I see a lot of times is when people are going around doing the assessors and they're taking pictures of people's houses. Everybody starts throwing pictures up on Facebook of somebody's vehicle out there and they're like, this person just took a picture of my house. Well, if they have a town like magnet on the side of it saying Assessor's Office, they know it's the assessors.
Or even if it's just the logo of the town.
Yeah.
So you can pass it.
And, and a magnet would be a heck of a lot cheaper than insurance or a vehicle, so even if it's the two departments or whoever goes out add what, so they know. Well, Town and War, they're still gonna wonder, why is this Town and War in here?
It's just like these things.
Put Assessor or, or to help.
Right.
I believe the assessors do have magnets.
Do they?
Yeah, um, but you know, uh, magnets usually require a commercial plate.
I was thinking that too, we'd have to look into that.
How much is the, a plate would probably be, less expensive than a vehicle and insurance too.
Well, no, the person that was driving the vehicle usually has to have a commercial plate on it, so, I don't, I don't know.
I have a magnet in, in one of my cars. It's little tiny, it says.
Yeah, but I mean, these are for official.
Just move it back to like, for future, you're not gonna do it now, but I was just.
You could put something in like the windshield or something.
It's a great idea.
Yeah, no, it's a good idea.
Yeah, I also have calls where people are calling, why, why is the assessor at my house, or they actually know it's there, but there's other people like, there's a vehicle here, why is it here? Right, and so there's at least, they can know what department it called.
Yeah, yeah, if we could look into that, see, see what we can do, um, see if they have signs. Cause I, I don't know if you need a commercial plate for it, because it's not a business, it's a town. And then, if you can't put it if we're getting into a situation where that, where well, maybe a town employee shouldn't be doing town business in their own vehicle, well, there's that. Because, you know.
There are yards though.
Well, yeah, they are, because they get mileage for it. They get mileage for it for assessors, but what would prevent you throwing in a, a magnet on the side of your vehicle saying Assessor's Office?
Well, maybe in your meeting, you, you state, or you put it on the website for vehicles to have it.
Yeah.
You know, there's, you don't have to, I mean, that's that's future, but yeah, you have to, you have to, it's not for tonight's meeting, but just food for thought.
It's a good idea.
There is troubleshooting around it, obviously.
Yeah, did you have something?
Yeah, just gotta throw some two cents in, um, so in mass. Normal, if it's a business and you're putting a logo, you have to have commercial plates. Non-profit organizations, tax-exempt organizations, you don't have to have commercial plates to have logos on a vehicle. Um, suburban municipality kind of falls under that, cause we're tax-exempt anyways too, so.
Yeah, we'll just look into it and say, hey, because that would alleviate some of the Facebook drama that keeps on going up there.
And maybe even at the department, like if they know they're doing inspections that day, can post we're gonna be doing inspections between, you know, or give them a roundabout, so, not that people like to look at the website, but that could also be, hey, it was on our website also and.
Well, Town Alert would be good.
Yeah, get a little more, notify people a little better, but I, I really
But.
do agree, there should be something on there, because I do I, I see all the time on Facebook, somebody, there was somebody outside my house that took a picture and then people keep on commenting, well, was it the assessor, was it this, was it that? And, and people just, you, you get like fifty comments for one vehicle that pulled into somebody's, in front of somebody's house and took a picture.
Yeah, I know they have the magnetic signs down there in the Assessor's Office.
May- maybe we can see if they actually need it or not. And, you know, if they have the signs, you're saying they do, throw them on the vehicle, so they, people know.
Also like a flashing vest would be nice.
Yeah, high vis vest, that's cheap.
Yeah.
Cause I've seen those posed, the car and the guy walking, taking the picture, so if they have a vest at least.
Well, I, I think they do have vests that say Assessors on the back. They should probably be wearing those anytime they leave their vehicle.
They're working on it.
I imagine they do.
Well, they should have town, if they're asked, they should have the town badge. They, they have that, so.
So maybe we work on a policy?
You're representing the town, yeah.
You know, every time we provide the magnets, we provide a couple vests and we provide the IDs. And they, if you go out in, in the name of the town, you should have all three.
Yeah. Yeah, Joe, thank you.
You're welcome. And you have one other thing too.
Sure.
Um, it was about the, when you were talking about the boards speaking at a meeting. Which I think, you know, coming from my experience, um, that's as you, you guys did, um, what about the people? Kind of like it started in the conversation and it, it's wiped off, so I wasn't sure. Um, and I know you already voted on it, so it doesn't matter, but I'm just asking a question. Um, those administrative assistants or secretaries or whoever's taking the minutes. Are you saying that they shouldn't get paid for being at that meeting, doing their job who's not overtime, or you're talking about just the boards that should be presenting the articles? Does you, it's kind of like it was skirted over those people that not all of them are town employees, but regardless, like, who's taking those minutes, they should get paid for it. And whether it's a, a full meeting or not, you don't know how long the debate's going on. So if you have to like kind of justify how long they're gonna be there, they should get paid to be at this meeting if they're working the meeting.
Can, can I say something? So, when Jim and I were talking about this, we thought that the, the boards there to present their articles, they can take their own minutes. Because really, the, the minute, the minutes are pretty brief.
They're minimal, they're easy, right.
So there's no reason why the board member can't just put their own minutes in.
Yeah, basically it's opened up the meeting and then the articles were presented and then it's closed, and it's all video recorded anyways.
Read your vote and then you close it.
Right, and it's, it's all video recorded anyways, so it could be done the next day, um, via video. It just doesn't make sense to have all the different departments having administrative help there to do it. And then it also enters into a conflict of interest, right?
Yeah, the, well, the town clerk is like the official record keeper of, of town meeting.
Okay, so technically departments don't have to take minutes.
She's, she's gonna record the results and those are the official result, results.
Okay. And I think, so in the case of Planning Board, we have to open a meeting and close a meeting when we present zoning changes. But again, one of us can just do that, a board member can do that, right?
Right, you also have to get more, like the forums, they have to open it, but if it's one or two, you don't have to have a forum.
Right.
Right, then you then if you have articles, you need one.
Yeah.
Alright, that, that was it, just, those are my two questions and.
Okay, alright, thank you very much, nice, nice hearing from you again.
Yeah, good seeing you guys.
Good seeing you too, take care Joe.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments and concerns? Anybody on Zoom, anybody else?
No one else on Zoom.
Alright, moving on, next meeting is October twenty-sixth, that is at ten AM, that's the tour of the levee. And that's with the Corps of Engineers. And then after that is the regular meeting and that is, that is six PM as usual. And both these days are on a Thursday, so that's October twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three. And.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
Bedik Beni's aye.
David Dufray, aye, we are adjourned.